Today is Tuesday, March 26, 2024 at 4:00 p.m. This meeting will be conducted in person in the city council chambers and via remote video and teleconference pursuant to one MRSA Section 403-A. Members of the public may submit comments by using the form on the city's website under Government, City Council, Contact the Council. This is a budget workshop session of the city council and not a business meeting of the city council. The meeting is open to the public but not a public hearing. The chairpersons shall conduct the work session with the committee members and may elect to call upon the public in attendance for either questions or to obtain input and information. All work products will be developed by consensus and forwarded as advisory to the city council for further matter warranting legislative action by the city council at a business meeting so posted and assembled. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to its father of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And now for an order to approve the minutes from the city council budget meeting held on March 19, 2024. Let me do the roll call first because I don't think Nate's going to make it in time for the roll call. Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Present.
Counselor Stackpole.
Present.
Counselor Hanselman.
Present.
Counselor Martel.
Present.
Counselor Trenchmontane.
Present.
And Counselor Hitchcock already said he was going to be late, so you'll be seeing him come. And I am Mayor Brink, also present, our city manager Steve Buck and executive administrator Larissa Ricketts. So now, may I have an order to approve the minutes from the city council budget meeting held on March 19, 2024? Ann?
Don't move, Madam Mayor.
May I have a second? Pete?
Second.
All those in favor? Very good. All right, so now we're on to new business. And I'm going to just make a little statement beforehand, and this is mostly for the public out there in TV land, hopefully people are watching. I just want to make a comment that Superintendent Matt Nelson and City Manager Steve Buck, along with their department heads, began creating the budget in the fall. In creating the budget, they had concerns for maintaining the services in our city and schools, plus being very responsible to the taxpayers in our community. Now, for the job of the city council. Our job is to oversee the entire budget of the municipal and school side, to determine the cost to the citizens of Sanford-Springvale area, and keep in mind that we are moving our community ahead into the future. We need to focus on the growth and the needs of our community, both municipal and school side. We do determine the line items for the municipal side. What we do not determine is the line items for the school side of the budget. We only determine the bottom line of that. It is up to the school committee to then go back and determine where those funds are being spent. So I just wanted to clarify that because of the hundreds of emails I've been getting, people thinking that we're the ones who make that determination. We don't, but everyone has worked on this budget for a very long time. I know that both the school side and the municipal side have gone back multiple times to redetermine where funds were going to be spent for concerns. After we gather, we talk, we go, okay, it's still a little too high, let's go back and see where we can cut. I want us to keep in mind that when I go to the grocery store, the gallon of milk that I am now buying is twice the amount of money as it was before. The gas that I buy for my car is up. The rent that people are paying is up. Everything in our community, if you go and you buy a ream of paper for your office, that price is up. Everything is up, which means the school and the municipal side, our budgets have to be up. They cannot be flat, and they cannot be up just a little. It has to be up, going on with what everything else within our community has gone up. Also, I'd like to point out that both the school side and the city side had to increase pay for people in order to be able to hire people in our community. So even the cost of the people that we have working for us has increased. So we can't expect our budget to stay flat. This is not going to be a very easy decision this week and next week. It is going to be very hard. I know for a fact that Steve Buck and Matt Nelson have lost sleep over and over again during the past weeks. I did not sleep at all last night, knowing that we were going to be making some tough decisions today. I truly hate budget season. It is really tough. It's tough on the school committee, and it's tough on the city council. It's tough on everybody in our community that puts together this budget. We are doing our best. We're trying to keep in mind the citizens of our community and the struggles that they're going through to just pay rent. But we're also keeping in mind that we hire an awful lot of people who spend money in our community to help us grow. So we need to keep that in mind. So, having said all that, we are going to begin, and I know that we're not going to please everybody tonight and next week when we finalize the budget. This is a tough, tough time. I'll be surprised if we don't anger everybody out there at some point, which probably means we are doing a good job if everybody is upset. So we'll do our best, and I apologize to anybody out there, but I am not responding back to all the emails. It is impossible for me to answer everybody's email, and I know they will increase, and so I said, we're just doing our best. So here we go. And we're going to start with the municipal side. Steve's going to begin, and he's going to do a presentation on the computer, and you're going to be able to see it up on the screen, and we're going to be flicking back and forth. We're going to be cutting some things, maybe even adding some things as we prioritize, and Steve's going to be able to show us what that bottom line looks like, and we're going to try, I mean, we've all had made comments a while ago on what we felt the budget should be, and so we're going to try to average what we all think, and hopefully we come out with something that we are able to function in as a community for next year. So Steve, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Ben, I'm going to slide the Excel sheet over here to the other screen. You can frame up on that, please. Thank you. So I'm going to start where we left off last week, seems longer than a week ago. We talked about the garage fixed lifts. Those were left in the CIP as currently, but we flagged those in yellow as an item to come back to. We then talked about the live scan fingerprint for the police department, and the decision was to not put that, to take that out of, no, no, we paused there, right?
Holding it.
So that's where we need to start, as to whether you're going to put that in or take that out of the CIP. So, again, this sheet, if you choose to take that out of your CIP, it's a $23,606 reduction. I'll put an X there. It will come off, it will tally at the bottom. Everything that you do on this sheet ripples through everything. It ripples through the expense and revenue tax calculations, it ripples through the six year municipal history, and it ripples through this slide at the end, which shows the change, year-over-year change for the various valuation of property cards for a single-family residential home with a homestead in it. And so, all of these amendments, any amendments you make this evening ripple through all of those documents. So that being said, what is the council's desire as far as the live scan fingerprint in the police department? The chief had given a verbal presentation on that at the last meeting, and that's where we left off, we ran out of time.
Could I have any comments from the council, please, on this? Pete?
Yeah, I understand that this is a time saver, so I don't know if it's $23,000 worth of labor just to get this and move this through. So I just need a little more information on how much we saved the police department by implementing this. I know you said something briefly about that.
Do you want Craig to come down?
I do, I would like to make a decision on that. Thanks, you guys.
And if people out there, this is Chief Anderson from the police department.
Thank you, Mayor. It's not so much, it's a time-saving event, it's, we're not meeting the requirements of the state, is what it is. We submit fingerprints to State Bureau of Investigation, they submit them to the FBI. It's for, to show conviction data and to show when a person's charged and what the ultimate result of that charge is. So if we take a set of fingerprints and they don't meet the criteria for FBI or FBI, they're put aside, and the underlying charges are not associated with that particular individual, and that can have some negative ramifications down the road. So it's not so much time, it is efficiency. For, and I think I mentioned, like, we're still doing fingerprints, you know, the old-fashioned way, and this allows somebody to put the hand, like, on a scanner, and it scans the fingerprints. It's, they're good every time. I think we are in compliance, what did we say, a public, 30-something percent is what we're in compliance, or out of compliance 70% of the time. That's, so this is an addition to help solve that problem. Will it solve every problem? No, it won't, because unless we find one and we're searching for one that's portable, that can be taken to, say, Walmart if there's a shoplifter, and the officer can collect the fingerprints there, or taken to the court by the court officer during arraignment and collect the fingerprints for folks that have not already submitted to them, then we still will have a lapse. However, that technology does exist, so we feel like we could utilize these funds to purchase something that will fix most of this. If we can get our compliance up to 70%, that would be huge. Obviously, anything above that is a major win.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Bob, and then Ann.
Chief, is this, this device, this kind of technology, is commonplace in other police forces around Southern Maine?
Yes, and not only in police departments, but also in courts, they have them in some courts. It's unfortunate, though, that, Steve and I talked about this, the new court in Bitterford does not have it. We probably wouldn't be having this conversation if they did, but some courts have them. Wells has it, a number of agencies, you know, the other ones, a lot of the guys we hired from New Hampshire are used to using it because they have it in New Hampshire. So I can't, I don't have an exact number, how many, but the answer is yes, it's commonplace today.
Ann?
Chief, I really appreciate that the police department has brought forward potential areas where they could sacrifice. You had brought, I believe, this one as a potential area because it doesn't, it's not critical to day-to-day operations, correct?
Correct.
And it is something we could delay the purchase of to a future year, and conceivably, something like the JAG grant might cover an investment like this?
It won't cover it all, but.
But it could be an area.
We're averaging $18,000, $19,000 a year in a JAG grant, so it would utilize all those funds, and of course, we fund other things with JAG as well. A lot of our overtime for traffic enforcement either comes from Bureau of Highway Safety or from JAG. So, and again, I'm not going to, I'm not begging for this, we did have it in last year since it was cut, and if it doesn't make it this year, we'll put it in again next year, obviously, but we never seem to see a really good budget year, right? We always seem to be having these conversations, and I do get it, as you do.
Thank you. Any other questions about this? Jonathan?
It's more of a comment, but I think that this is something that's needed for the police department to do their job, so I would support keeping this in. Thank you.
Okay, and Pete? So you're shaking your head?
Yeah, I definitely support the PD having this, and I know it's a tight year, and I want to squeeze everything, but I think this is a disservice, so I think that we should, my opinion, go forward with this one.
Okay. Any other comments about, Ann?
I would just say that if I were allocating additional, when I look at this $24,000, just under, I'd rather apply that towards a mental health unit person than this equipment at this point in time. I feel like that's more critical to day-to-day operations, so that's just my thinking.
How about, while we're right there, before we make up, because maybe that is an important thing, if you don't mind staying at the mic for a little longer, because I know that there are several other things you decided to prioritize and cut out of the budget, and you were looking at the mental health unit. And I know that you were giving up stuff in hopes, basically in anticipation of getting that, and it's not in here. So could you explain, like, I know that you, multiple years, you've wanted a command vehicle and you still don't have one, in fact, you're driving around your own vehicle. So I know that hasn't worked out, and so now, this wouldn't work out, but I think we always need to encourage departments to prioritize what they, boots on the ground, what you think is important. So if you don't mind, I know you're probably not prepared, but could you share that information with us?
Sure. I'm not driving my own car, but it's not a police car, and we did make that sacrifice to make sure that the folks who really need a police car have one in the agency. To kind of summarize what you just mentioned, we did scrutinize our budget very heavily, and we felt that the most important item for the community would be the second mental health clinician. And I agree with Counselor Hanselman that if it came down to the live scan or a clinician, and 100%, the clinician is more valuable. The mental health crisis in our country, in our state, in our city, is severe, and there aren't enough resources provided by non-governmental entities, or the state, or the federal government. And if we can have positive impact with folks to get them to resources or to interrupt a crisis that causes some violence, then the police department, we feel that we should be doing that. So I would advocate, once again, I would advocate that that position be funded. Now, we have some ideas on how to fund that, that may not impact taxation. It would require us to juggle some of our staffing, and we would have to coordinate with Ronnie and with Stacy to keep a track on what numbers we have. We're authorized to have 43 police officers, we currently have 41. It has been, you know, a difficult three years, I'm two and a half years into this, or almost two and a half years, right? Actually, July will be three years. We started out back in July of '21 with 40 officers assigned to the police department. Since that time, 16 folks retired or separated from the police department by natural means. We've hired 20, and that is a testament to HR and the great job that they do for us to get those folks processed and processes put together. Three of the, well, a total of four of those folks were retiree rehires, and we've retained three of them. One didn't renew their retiree rehire contract. So we've netted 17 people over this timeframe, and so we're short two people right now. Now, we would be filled up, but we hired three people who didn't meet the standard. So those positions have not been vacant for that entire time, they've rotated through, if you understand how that worked a little bit. So it's not that we don't need 43 officers, I would submit to you that this agency needs 50 officers. 43 officers is the same number we had 20 years ago. And 20 years ago, we had one officer assigned to the school, not two. And 20 years ago, we didn't have, we had one person at Main Drug Enforcement Agency and not two. And the court officer was not a full-time position, I held it, it was part-time, and every police shift had 10, 11, or 12 officers assigned, and now we are like eight, nine, and day shift might be 10 if we don't have any vacancies. So we have not grown as an agency over the course of those 20 years. We've just moved pieces around the chessboard to fill needs such as the mental health unit, which was basically crafted out of the detective division, and then we got a cops grant to add one person to it, and then, thank you very much, you gave us a traffic officer, which was highly needed, and we added that. So we started at 40 people, today we have 43, we've added a couple of civilian positions as well, but long-term, strategic planning, five years out, I think that the agency would be far more successful, the agency. The city will be far more successful if they had a police department that wasn't, that was staffed adequately. Now, you are paying for it already, because we expend 700 or 800, we're going to spend, what, $700,000 or $800,000 in overtime this year? Right now, we've expended $576,000, I ran the number before I came over. So you're going to pay for it in overtime, or you're going to pay for it in regular salaries, or you're going to pay for it in lack of service. But the community's going to pay, you know, the community has to pay, right? And I'm not saying that we want more money, what I'm saying is, it's a cost that we can't delay, we can't keep deferring, because it really doesn't get deferred. If we have 43 officers doing the work of 50, that means basically you could hire seven, and that would reduce the overtime significantly. And I know overtime was a discussion last weekend, I'm a little off the track here, but it all circles in, it all ties together. Ronnie and I worked the last couple of years with Steve over our budget, and what we saw was the salary lapse from full-time salary to overtime salary. So the lapse between what we spent with our, didn't spend with our vacancies covered the difference in the overtime, and that narrowed, and it narrowed, and it narrowed, and now it didn't, and so last year it didn't exist, and we spent more. And this year, it's going to do the same thing. And we weren't budgeting enough to cover that with overtime. So I think last year's, we went from $300,000 to $313,000. We've got a $13,000 bump in our overtime budget. That didn't even cover the raises. So if everything stayed flat, the raises alone would have been more than that, than that line item, right? So when you wrap all that together, and we're making decisions on what we're asking you for, for a new budget year, and we go back and look at where we started from and where we're going, and, nope, we didn't get a command vehicle last year, and we pulled it off this year because that's not the bang for the buck for the community. You know, I can continue to drive a non-police car if that's necessary, but I don't feel comfortable telling you that someone that's in a mental crisis, that we can't provide some resources for, or some follow-up, or some case management for, isn't going to end up in a tragedy like someplace else that's happened in the state. And we want to make sure that this community, you can never prevent everything, but we want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to prevent something. And so that's why we would advocate for the clinician. So, to bring this all back around, if we juggled one of our 40, one of our vacant positions and utilized those funds to hire a clinician, and delayed the hiring of a police officer, and then brought it back together in the 25, 26 budget, right? Is that right? 25, 26? Then we accomplish both, right? We don't impact negatively the taxes, but we do provide that service to the community. It would just be a commitment of the council to bring back number 43 in that next budget year, or fund the social worker at some point. And of course, we could, and we can, we do look at grant funding, but I will tell you that doing the federal government dance for grants is a difficult, is a difficult move to learn. The cops grant we had last time was done by our, the Grant Rite of the City had hired, and Eric and I have struggled this week with Ronnie, who's trying to help us out, to complete the Just Grants, SAM Grants, and the prerequisites to even get entered into the system. It's just difficult. I don't know if that answered your questions or not.
So what we would do is, we wouldn't take away that position, we'd keep that as a placeholder, the 43rd police officer, and we would use the funds for that to fund the LSW, LSCW, for the police department for this year. Hopefully, throughout the process, it would be great if we could get a grant in the meantime, and then we could then, without impacting the budget, hire the 43rd police officer in the next year.
In the next, right.
Okay. All right, so we're just pausing it. Is that clear? Bob?
I mean, I guess I'll just call it the political issue with that is, you are committing that position to next year's budget now, but, you know, I think that's just a thought, we would start whatever the cost of that position is in the whole next year.
The 43rd officer is already in our budget.
Yes, but we're going to use those funds for the health officer, mental health officer, we got to make those funds up next year, and that's what the chief is asking.
Right.
He's saying he'll do this, but he's asking us to make a loose commitment, you know, they're all.
But you can lose, but next year could be, okay, do we keep the clinician or keep an officer? I mean, it could be that, it could be it comes down to that, clinician or officer, if we can't find the money to fund it, and I would be fully committed, but we don't even know what next year's looking like.
Correct.
It's hard to say that and then have your words, like, thrown back at you.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not for or against this, I'm just bringing out that point. You know me, I'm always looking for cliffs and other things like that, and we are making a commitment to next year. I mean, if that's what we want to do as a board, if that's the best choice for our community, given, then I'm all for it, you know? I hear what the chief is saying, so, but I just wanted to make that point.
Okay, more?
I see this as the department making the decisions that are best for the department. So there's that position in there. If the chief and his crew think that the best use of that resource is for another clinician next year, that's great. That's the choice that they get to make. We're leaving that money, we would leave that money in, we wouldn't be touching it, it doesn't impact, you know, the up and down that we need to do in order to set the tax rate. So I'll just say that, you know, I'm supportive of the decision they wish to make in order to get the clinician, if that's the priority for them next year, I'm okay with it. But it doesn't, it's not going to impact our back and forth this evening, I don't think. So I'm trying to throw out support, but at the same time, say it doesn't.
Except we're saying we are supporting that decision.
Well, we have the two open positions now, and we know there's going to be two more. Well, we, we have the two open positions now, and we know there's going to be two more coming up. We, we know somebody's leaving in December.
Yeah.
And we're, and we're, we're sure that someone is going to leave either in July or December. They conferred that to me this, this past week. And then we also are gonna have a civilian position that's, that vacates in June-ish or July. And, and we want, obviously, to fill that. So we believe we'll be able to fill that one. Police officer ones, look, we've done a great job. I say we, we as a community have done a great job recruiting. You know, there are agencies out there that are, that are half-staffed, that are down, you know, eight, nine, ten people. To be down two people in this environment for police officers after being, have hired, have hired twenty? Seventeen we've netted? You guys have done outstanding.
That is a compliment to the police department because people are hearing about it, and they want to be a part of that. So I think that is a congratulations to your, you and your department.
Well, thank you, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't be in the position we are without the support of you and the public and the partnership that we have.
So let's find out how everybody else feels about that. Ann?
I continue to be in support of that position, but no impact to net to taxation. So it seems to be a win-win, and I like Moore's description of it. My only question for one of the three, Steve, Chief, or Ronnie, is, is it even exchange in terms of fully burdened cost between those positions or close to roughly?
I can, I can give you some of that. The, the police position is budgeted on the salary side for eighty-seven thousand, one, one thirty-one, and the clinician next year is sixty-five, nine-two-four. So it's substantially less for a clinician than it is for a police officer. The, the benefit package, we just don't know. I think you gotta take that as, you know, if we hire somebody with a family, it's gonna cost more for benefits. Ronnie, would you?
We also might need the extra for overtime if we're gonna be.
Ronnie, do you agree with everything I just said?
Okay. Jonathan, what do you think?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to see that position filled if we can make it work, so.
Thank you, Jonathan. And Pete?
Yeah, I'm in full support of the police department on that.
Bob, will you be comfortable with that?
I'm fine.
Okay. All right, so we're saying move ahead with that, and.
Now fingerprinting.
And now the, back to the fingerprinting, the topic we were talking about. So what's our opinion of that? This is, the other thing didn't cost us, it was, so, what do you think about that? Ann?
I just, we have a, we're not gonna even get where we wanna go. So I, I really feel like when we look at these twenty-five thousand dollar items that we have some flexibility on that aren't critical to operations, I, I, we have to make some tough decisions or we're gonna be looking at cutting positions. So I, I, I think we really have to think hard about including it in the current budget.
And I would have to agree with you, and I think if we can keep, the more people employed, the better off our community is. So, yes. Jonathan, do you have any?
Yeah, I think if we're gonna, if we're gonna be keeping the positions, might make sense to shift this out just so we've got a little bit more flexibility this time around and see how it rolls into next year.
Okay. And Pete?
Yeah, I echo what Jonathan just said, that as long as you're okay with that, we'll, we'll revise that fingerprint next year, okay?
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
And Bob, what do you think?
I'm, I'm okay with.
Removing the fingerprint?
Excuse me, yeah, I, I'm okay with removing the fingerprint. I, I do hear what a concern it is, and that it's not gonna go away, and that we, we really do need to stay updated with the technology, but this just might not be the year. And I think that you've got your priorities straight, and the police department does, and I think we do here on the council, so.
And Moore, are you also comfortable with that?
Yeah, it's just, it makes me think of the things that have cropped up, you know? There are some departments that haven't even been necessarily looked at for other things that could be, I don't know, things that could be pushed off.
So let's just deal with this one for now, then we'll get to the others also.
I, I think it's worth saying that if we take it out, I mean, we got two meetings here, counting this one, we can always put it back in.
Okay. All right, so, sorry, we're taking that one out.
Thank you.
All right. Steve, we're back to you now.
Okay, here's, here's your largest item for consideration this evening. So currently, the roadway infrastructure for the fiscal year that we're in right now is funded at three million dollars for the year. The prior council commitment was an examination to ramp that up a half million dollars each year until we reached four million dollars. So this year's budget currently contains the roadway CIP at being three point five million dollars per that prior commitment. So what you see here is a five hundred thousand dollar reduction. If you put an X there, you're gonna eliminate that ramp. You'll keep your, you'll keep your roadway commitment at the current three million dollars for the year. We will, there will be a couple of in-town streets that will come off your, your long-term list, be delayed, that will get pushed forward, because we will, we will fund the MPI's and the RACE grant and the, the major road projects first. And then coupled with that, if you look a couple of lines down here, you have the ability to take two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of revenue from tax increment financing from the downtown TIF district to offset even that three million dollars. So when I look at this sheet, the only way I can get even close to where I believe the council wants to go is I have to take that half a million dollar ramp out and then also apply the, the TIF revenue that's appropriate there. So that's gonna give you a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar gain on your budget, as far as reductions are concerned. So I, I, I see those as kind of a two-package deal. Take the half million dollar ramp out and put the, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of TIF in there. And the, and the other, yeah, Matt Hill's not here tonight. The other aspect that, that I've charged Matt with is we've really been, as you know, in the past, aggressive with, with municipal partnership initiatives, MPI's. Those, those provide us six hundred and fifty thousand dollars per MPI. So we're using that as a mechanism to try and close this gap on the ramp, and try to have at least one MPI per year. We have the High Street MPI that was just approved, and we also just got approved for the, another PPI, Planning Partnership Initiative for South Sanford. I haven't signed that yet, but we've just got the letter of approval and such under that. They're actually terminated a VPI because that was what we were successful with, with the RACE grant. So that's under consideration. That will bring future funding for us as well. So the, the summation of that is, we're trying to get as much state and/or federal dollars to go in conjunction with our local tax dollars to get us to that same point in time of averaging the four million dollars per year on our streets and roads.
Okay, thank you. Bob?
So with this, we've got a long history with this. We, we started, Moore and I started, I guess it's over twenty years ago, putting this money into the budget for roadways. And, and let me, let me say before I begin here, I'm probably not gonna speak for or, or against this. We're, we're in a tough budget year. Two hundred and fifty thousand is a lot of money. I did argue with the latest charter revision that we fix this amount so that we were once again required by charter to continue to raise this money every year. And if that had been accomplished, we wouldn't be in this position where we had to make the decision. So that's maybe, maybe a good thing. But then, of course, we have two hundred and fifty thousand we can take out of the budget. Maybe that's another good thing. This is really an investment in the future. I mean, the money's being, being used now, but the idea is, at least for me, is that when the, the grant money runs out, we still have some money left over, and we can continue to invest in the roads, sidewalks, et cetera, what's so-called non-rolling stock. I'm probably not gonna be around when the community needs this money because I'm looking, you know, ten, ten years or so into the future. But again, the money's being used now to do the current projects also. This is when the grants run out. So I've always been very hesitant to tinker with this. Of course, the reason why it's in there is because councils in the past reduced money for infrastructure. They didn't fix the roads. As everyone knows, and as everyone is enjoying, who lives in the community, knows that we've bonded, and we're getting these roads done, and we wanna be able to keep them up. So this is a compromise for me. It's a big compromise. I think it, it just needs to be done in order to reduce the budget. We're not gonna reduce the budget by taking paper clips and paper and tires and gasoline out of the budget. We've gotta take a big chunk of money out, and this is a big chunk of money. So I will say, I'm not real happy that we're doing this, but I asked the city manager before. It's worth mentioning again, Steve, you said the TIF, two hundred and fifty thousand is sustainable. In other words, it will be there year after year. So, you know, left hand or right hand type thing. But I think we're in a position where we have to do this. However, had we taken, I think, the, the Y-step, and this really is no reduction in money available for roadways, had we taken the Y-step in saying we were just committed to this for infrastructure, period, there wouldn't even be a decision that would have to be made. It would just be money going to the roads and not going back and forth. So I will support this proposal, but reluctantly.
Thank you, Bob. Any other comments? Jonathan?
Thank you. I think I'm sort of mirroring some of Bob's comments, but I think moving some of the TIF money towards the road budget makes some sense because that's money that's available that we basically saved other ways. So if we can pull that out of, you know, just plain taxation money, I think it definitely makes sense. And I think we're kind of at a level where we can adjust the, the ramp up a little bit, especially with the RACE grant and a lot of the, the money that's going into roads and some infrastructure changes there. So I think the work's getting done, it's just the funding sources have shifted a little bit. So I think this is a good opportunity to, to take advantage of that.
Thank you. Ann, and then Pete?
I, I'm just looking for clarification on the TIF for downtown roads, Steve. Will that two hundred and fifty thousand be put towards existing road repairs and improvements that are in Matt's book, or would they be put towards new projects? Meaning, the two hundred and fifty thousand.
What was the last part? Would we put in his book or, or what was the?
Or are we putting it towards new projects that we haven't previously?
No, no, it's in, it's in the pre-existing book. So again, so I went back and reread the downtown district TIF yet again. It's specific in there for the public infrastructure roads in the downtown district. So it's very, it's a very easy checkbox. So if, you know, DCD came in and audited this the day after you authorized it, we're, we're good from this, this perspective. You've, you've committed as part of the RACE grant scope of work, five million dollars of our local resources to match five million dollars from, from MDOT and the twenty-five million dollars from the federal government. So you've got a long ways of using this two fifty to get to that five million, which is already pre-authorized and there. So we're saving in Matt's portfolio. He's, he's, he's got the year-to-year savings in there so that when we get to the twenty-six, twenty-seven construction years, we've got our match, just like he has been saving for the Carter Street, which got slid into the RACE grant. So I'm very comfortable that this is absolutely compliant, and I believe that by next year, I may be able to give you more than that two fifty out of the same downtown TIF. So maybe that helps us get more towards our ramp, you know, without, you know, you know, three million this year, maybe it's, you know, it's three, three and a quarter next year with another two fifty coming out of the TIF.
Pete?
That was my question. I was gonna see if the city manager was comfortable with this, pulling the, the half a million and re-putting it in out of taxation. So, good question, Ann, so thank you.
Absolutely. So, you know, the, the reason that these resources are now available is you retired, you know, you will this June when Aaron makes the, the last payment on the Heritage Drive debt service down there that constructed that new roadway with all of the amenities and such. So that's what, that's what frees this capital up for us this year.
Excellent. Bob?
Steve, I, I think you talked about this before, but because this is downtown TIF money, does it have to go towards, in the future, towards roadway, sidewalks, et cetera, in the downtown TIF area?
Yes, unless, yes. Yes. You'll have an opportunity, so in the coming year, Keith McBride will apply for an extension for our downtown TIF, which would be very favorable because you keep your original, your OAV, which was very low. You know, like five million or something like that. So, so you keep your OAV. You can make amendments to it at that point in time. For what? For, for other purposes that are, that are allowable with the downtown TIF. So a downtown TIF is different than your other economic TIFs in that it's not subject to the five percent cap on valuation, it's not subject to the five percent cap on land mass. But it has more specificity as far as it has to be in the district, right? So, I mean, that, this, this includes all the way the improvements, the Walmart and Lowe's improvements that were then swept back to, to do the type of improvements in the downtown so that that extension of your retail area didn't detract detrimentally from your downtown, so.
And, and again, I think we need to do this, but I, do we, and I heard you say we can revisit the, the TIF wording, but do we need, or future councils need to be concerned at all that that money's split in half? In other words, two hundred and fifty thousand can be spent anywhere in the city, but two hundred and fifty thousand has to be spent just in the downtown district?
So, so right now, you, it has to be spent in the downtown district?
Right. Can we change that? I think you mentioned this. Can we change the wording when it, whatever you said was gonna be renewed a year or something like that to expand the language, or is that restricted by state law or something?
It's restricted by state law, so, and I'm not gonna come off the beanie here tonight.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's fine. That's, that's fine. And again, I think we, we need to explore this and know what we're getting ourselves into here. I still think we need to do this, but, see, now it's getting messy, and it didn't need to be messy. But anyways, okay, thank you.
This, this, this is a, a very logical and plausible move to, to be making for this, this funding, and it's more frees up by next year to be able to take more of that, put back into your downtown district. This is not dissimilar than before we knew everything was as bad as, as what it is. You know, I was going to propose if we take a piece of that to do off-street parking improvements in the downtown district, but obviously, the base need is, is there as a priority above that, so.
Madam Mayor, I have one more question, I'm sorry. Just, is that extension for ten years, Steve? I'm forgetting the timeline, because it's a thirty-year max.
Thirty-year max, but they've, they've changed that as well. It's at least a ten-year extension.
Okay, so it's at least a significant amount, thank you.
Okay, can we have a full screen again, Steve?
Yeah, Ben, can you give us full screen, please? Thank you.
There we go. All right.
So is that the consensus? I'm gonna take this five hundred thousand out?
Can I say some, an idea on the garage lifts before we go to the next item?
Yeah, I'm gonna grab the two fifty from the TIF.
Wait for him to do all that. So the garage lift, go ahead.
So as, as I look at the rolling stock, five hundred thousand dollars that you put towards rolling stock, and I know you try to keep that as even as possible. If the lift is so important to our rolling stock, why couldn't we go to four seventy on rolling stock and get the lift? And call it a day? Do you know what I mean? Yeah, it's, by the time we buy and sell, sometimes it gets used equipment, you know? Sometimes we can make it work. It seems like it would make more sense to put in something you say is important for our current rolling stock, and it services our rolling stock, and maybe reduce the amount we do for rolling stock by just that small amount. I mean, for the trucks that we get out of that department, that's a pretty minor amount. And get the lift and then get, give up something.
Leave the, my, my understanding is leave the CIP at the five hundred thousand dollars, but take from that, under the fleet management, take the lifts out of the fleet management piece.
That's what I'm thinking, and that way, it's, it's a little less painful. You, you get a piece of equipment that sounds like it's important for the maintenance of the, the rolling stock. Just a thought.
There's safety concerns, I'm sorry.
Well, that's why I'm saying let's get it.
Takes care of it.
There was a safety, but there was a safety concern associated.
Did you guys all understand what was just happening with that? Jonathan?
So just so I understand what I, I'll articulate what I think I understand. So for the CIP funding for trucks and whatnot, we'll roll this lift into that. So, for the CIP funding for trucks and whatnot, we'll roll this lift into that funding.
Kind of, yeah.
You got it.
We'll put it under the fleet management.
Under fleet management, yes.
Okay, so it doesn't need to be a separate line item.
And Pete, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that, because they definitely need it, and it, and it's gonna cost a lot more in the long run sending everything out, and I don't wanna one of our maintenance guys getting killed, and, and that's what's gonna happen. So, thank you.
And Maury? Oh.
I already said something.
Sorry. Ann, I'm looking at Ann, I'm saying, Maury?
I'd like to give the deputy mayor a high five. That's the kind of thinking we need, right? Like, so, yes.
It is the kind of thinking we need.
Yes. Okay, so I think we're all set with that, too.
Poor Matt Hill.
If we're zooming, you could use an emoji, right?
[laughing]
Okay, uh, the next item is the $30,000 for the trails. So historically, we had been funding, I've seen, you know, years ago, we were at 10, crept up to 20. There was a 25,000 last year. This year, they have a request in there in the CIP to go to 30,000. They wanna finish off the rail trail and such under that. We just did an amendment to two, uh, TIFs that were retiring. Uh, just, we just got the letter of acceptance, is it today or yesterday? I, I lose track of what month of the week it is here, but, yeah, so we just got those, those two approvals. So the rub and the partners' TIFs, the credit enhancement agreements have, uh, matured. There's no more payment there, so we can now capture 100% of the revenue generated there. So when this first, and then one of the amendments that we put in, uh, it was the allowance to take trail funding from there. So, so you can, my suggestion is that you, uh, keep the $30,000 in for the trails. In other words, you don't put an X there, but you pick up the $30,000 of tax increment financing revenue to fund that trail program this year. And then we'll be able, that's sustainable as well, 'cause you can continue to fund your trails from there going forward.
Okay.
No different than we used to when I first started. They were doing some, uh, cutting in the, around the airport and such under that. They were using forestry funds to pay for the trails' maintenance and improvements.
Thank you. Are, Jonathan?
So, just to clarify, is that rolling under TIFs, but, um, not coming in until next year?
It would come in for this budget.
This budget. And how would that affect the other 250,000 that we had...
It's a separate, this two, this comes from two other TIFs, TIF districts.
Okay.
So this, those are the only two TIF districts that we've amended so far that, for the allowance in the development program to allow you to pull funds from them to put towards your trails.
And it's partially because the original term in the TIF, we paid off the things that we intended to pay, and plus, we're getting taxes now directly. We don't have to give it back.
I'm just wondering if we could use that money for, to offset something else. Um, I'm, I'd love to support the trails, but I wanna make sure that we're funding the things we need to first, um, and maybe adjusting that a little bit as needed.
Yep, so I, I appreciate the thought. The, the difficulty that we have is, so, the TIF, the total TIF districts generate about 2.2 million dollars per year in tax increment financing revenues. About 50% of that is, is paid back out in credit enhancement agreements in various forms at various levels to various developments. Uh, that leaves us with, uh, just over 1.1 million, of which we have, uh, just over 1 million of this assigned. This $30,000 is part of that assignment. So, you have to look at each, uh, independent TIF district, and I wanna commend, A, our, our new assessor, who's got us live now, so any, any change he makes anywhere in a TIF district, I see that live, and I can know what that change of value is and what it's gonna generate. Uh, and then, uh, community development and, uh, our treasurer partnered on getting the remainder of that. All of the TIF districts plugged in, all of the credit enhancement agreements plugged in, all of the development programs plugged in, and the revenues that they generate, and where we're using them to offset, as far as revenues and/or offsets on your debt service or offsets on your capital program. This 30,000 was just freed up from that extension of the rub and the partners' pieces. That's the allowable use that we put in, knowing that that's where we were gonna draw this from. So, the flexibility, I'm just saying, it's a long way of saying, the flexibility is not there yet, until we start to redevelop other amendments in our development programs.
Okay, so we couldn't, we really don't have a lot of ability to redirect this to other, other...
I have, I haven't yet, 'cause when, when Keith filed for the, uh, the rub and the partners' extension, we were looking specifically to be able to dedicate this towards the trails.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Ann?
And, Madam Mayor, I don't know if this is the place for this conversation, or perhaps right after this, but I did wanna chat about the combined, well, I guess what would be left is the rub TIF if, if Partners is covering trails, but want to talk about the use of that remaining 30,000, um, with the rub TIF extension, so we, after this. That's okay?
Yeah, okay. So, we all set with this? We're all in agreement? Bob?
Yeah, I, I'm in agreement with the same, uh, caveats that I said about the, uh, the road money. I, I hear that it's sustainable. To me, to me, I'm just sitting here thinking about it. I mean, this is kinda like, uh, um, it's time to be creative, and Steve, congratulations, you and others, you're being creative and looking at the budget and, and helping, helping out the, the, uh, the, the city. Uh, it's just, it's new territory, and I guess I'm just a little nervous about long-term commitments. Um, you know, it's, I don't really see the TIF as hard money in the, in the long run. Um, and, uh, so, I just say that. That's my reservation. I will support the, uh, the shifting funding, though.
Well, the thing is with the TIF money, as soon as, as soon as it can't be earmarked, it goes into general taxation. So this, the money's gonna, now, right now, we can earmark it to certain things because of the TIF. It gets, and it's, it shelters us from losing stuff. So, it's still, we're still gonna have that money in the future. It's just not gonna be able to be, you know, saved and, or put in certain spots. It's not really, that's why, I'm, I'm wondering what you're saying when it's like, when you're saying it's kinda phantom money, so.
No, 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 I didn't say, I said, I know, I, I use the term hard money. Hard money is what I consider in the budget and whatever, that you know is gonna be there, you know, year after, year after year after year. And likely, I guess it will be, but, uh, again, it's, it's, uh, new territory.
Okay. Ann, you had a comment about another $30,000 that you wanted to discuss?
Well, and it, and it sounds like we haven't yet fully allocated that. Um, but I had a question. It's my understanding that the, um, renewal included a piece for home, addressing homelessness, and this might be a reach, and it's a tiny baby number, um, but I'm looking at everything. Ann, I'm wondering if we can use a portion of the rub TIF to cover the increase in, and/or, uh, up to 30,000 of the, um, partnership funding to York County Community Action Corporation, because they are really addressing and working with us as a partner on homelessness in our community. So I just wondered if we could use some of those TIF funds against, um, that appropriation.
Steve?
Yeah, so I just pulled, um, both the rubs, rub and the partners' TIF. They're generating just about the same amount of dollars, 20, 28, 29,000, just under 29,000. Um, the, let's see. So the amendments to the, uh, development program, the one that would fit in that, it says costs associated with development, operation, and financial support of affordable housing as defined state statute, state statute, state statute, uh, to serve ongoing economic development efforts and costs associated with development, operation, and financial support of housing programs and services to assist those experiencing homelessness in the municipality as permitted, state statute, state statute. So, yes, you, you can. I, I just, I hadn't thought about specifically where to put that, if that 28,000 and change is going as an offset to York County, or if that's, um, you know, I hadn't thought about where to put that, but, the, the answer would be yes.
But, and it's not in...
We don't have that in here yet.
Anywhere, yeah. So it would be an adjustment?
Yes.
So is that something we're gonna just hold on to for right now, and by the end of the budget season, we need to make a decision on that?
Well, it's not something that impacts our taxation number, right, Steve? So we could, we could make a decision on where to...
Well, no, it would impact your taxation number if, if you use it as, as a direct offset for a pre-existing expense. That's a, that's allowable within the development program, so.
So maybe we could confirm it's eligible, it's an eligible use, and you could think more about it, Steve, since I just tossed it out there, and we could talk about it next week, if further?
I, I think it's a very safe utilization. I just don't know specifically where, where, which line to offset that on, to put it on. You can put it in as a, as an offsetting revenue, and then Ronnie and I can figure out where that, that most appropriately goes, so. Yeah, do you have the, I don't have the sheet. I've got too much, too many things opened up here. Do you have the sheet open? It was 28 and change. I don't remember. The, the TIF sheet.
Okay, so we can come back to that? So, where are we? Do we have all the Xs now? Everything else in place?
Let's do the top.
Nope, nope, there's one more. Uh, the 168,000, that is the fire station leasing pre-development activities. We're comfortable in making a recommendation at this point in time that you can take that out of the overlay for this year, and that takes 168,000 out of your capital program.
Okay. Is everyone okay with that one?
Okay.
Yep. Alright, so that one can come out.
It's a save.
It's a save.
So that's, uh, 1,055,702.88 reduction, um, year over year from what was in the budget book. And then we had flagged also in yellow the use of the 250,000 of additional undesigned in the fund balance.
Okay.
So, Madam Mayor, do we wanna talk about the fund balance?
Yes. I'm waiting to see what Steve's doing with this.
Oh, no, uh, talk amongst yourselves. I'm adding more cells. I'm gonna put the 28,000 dollars in here.
What is he doing now? Alright.
Pay no attention to the man behind the curtain.
Okay, so, the 250,000?
May I?
Yes.
So, in recognition of the exceptionally hard year we're at, and I, I hear a lot of people talk about this will be normal, but the, the reason I don't believe it's normal, quote unquote, is that at the municipal level, we're seeing a, kind of a double impact to our personnel, our wages and benefit packages because of recent updates to our, based on our market analysis, as well as our, um, contracts. So I'm hoping that we have some stabilization after this year. Um, that being said, though, we understand that there's a certain level of fund balance we wanna keep, um, on the books. We do have a little bit of leeway, and I would be really looking, and I said this at an earlier meeting, to have a one-time, and I wanna be really clear that my intent in this proposal is it's a one-time increase to use of fund balance and use it for specific expenses that are not ongoing. So to councilor stack pulls, um, continued comments and warnings about the cliff, really looking at those things that are one-time expenditures in the upcoming budget year. So we have 66,000 for Memorial Gym roof, 12,000 for Memorial Gym masonry. We have the Power BI investment. We have an 8,000 tractor for parks, excuse me, and I'm at, and, uh, and there's others, I think, that we can look at that are potentially one-time.
3,000 for a fingerprint machine?
Well, that's, I guess that could be a question, but, so I'd be looking for those things, um, that aren't ongoing expenses that will come back next year, that we could just cover this year. And it gets us really close to 250. So I feel really comfortable with that, um, use, and it's a significant impact to our numbers. It's still not enough.
Bob?
So, we're talking about increasing, um, money from surplus by 250,000? Is that, that's where we're at? Okay, so, um, yeah, it's, I just said it's time to be creative and things like that, and it, it is called surplus, but I don't see this being a one-time thing. That, that's, that's my point. I think, I, I have to hear that it's okay to tap into this money long-term. I mean, I can remember when, uh, it was like 800, uh, what am I saying, trying to say? 8,000, 85, 8,500? So, um, and I always used to complain about, let's take more money out of surplus, when I used to be involved with the schools, 'cause it's, you know, it's, 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 it's there. But, I wanna hear from an auditing perspective that it's okay for us to take this 250, to use this 250, and I would really like to hear people's opinions of, we're just gonna increase the amount by 250 from here on out. And, of course, listen to other people's thoughts. I, we, once again, we put it in there, we're gonna have to put it in there next year, or we're gonna have to make up 250,000. And now, we're already kinda making promises, like I was saying, and now we're getting close to a half a million dollars that, half, 500,000. Sorry, I've been watching too much TV here. I get my numbers mixed up. Um, so, you know, we're getting up there, and, and, uh, so it concerns me. Uh, I think it's a, it's a good idea on paper, but let's see if we can make it work. My opinion, though, is we need to just increase, um, the money and just plan on keeping it there, or else we're digging too much a hole for ourselves.
Maury?
Truthfully, what I see happening here is we are sacrificing capital improvements. And, and when Ann says, let's use this 250 for capital improvements, that means like, there's always stuff that comes up in capital improvements every year, so one-time expenses kind of don't exist, um, because we're, there are gonna be new things next year. So what I see happening here is what used to happen at, at town meetings all the time. It's when we have a tough budget year like this, you have two choices. You're looking at reducing staffing significantly, or you're looking at cutting back on your capital improvements, and that's essentially the majority of what we've been doing here, is capital improvements. So we're gonna be rebuilding our capital improvement numbers, and, um, which, in my opinion, is a bit easier to do than rebuilding staff. So it's, it's really hard to make these decisions, but we cut staff back in 2008 or 200, I think it's 2010. I don't know if Ronnie could remind me. We, we cut a significant amount of staff, and I think some of those positions, we literally just got back after all these years. So, that's what I see we're doing here, Bob. And that's, and so I recognize fully what you're saying, and it is capital improvements. It's what we all hated, but our numbers for capital improvement is so much higher than we were when we wrote the 2004 charter, that we're not, the damage is gonna be there. We're gonna have to rebuild from the damage, um, but I think it'll be easier to build that into the budget little by little by little, rather than trying to bring back staffing positions.
Are you saying yes or no? I'm not quite clear.
Oh, I think we, I think we should use the undesigned, recognizing that, um, if we, if we go back to 1.1 next year, it means we might have to sacrifice some capital improvements next year as well, until we're rebuilding. How's that?
That's fine. Thank you, thank you for that. But I, also, I'd like to revisit the sustainability of, of, uh, in, increasing this long-term, uh, rather than fall into kind of the pit that we're, we're all talking about here. Is, is there anybody who can comment on that from a...
Ann, I was seeing your head going...
Well, I think Steve said it, it's not sustainable. So we have to really do it with a clear understanding that we can't keep hitting our fund balance for 1.35 million. It's, it's not sustainable.
Is there an amount that is sustainable? Is there?
Well, we have been sustaining the, the million and then the 1.1 million. Uh, so the sustainability goes to, uh, you know, the budgets are consistently more tight. The salary lapse isn't covering, you know, the loss of positions anymore. Uh, you tighten down, you tighten down, you tighten down. So the ability to put, to, to not expend from that use of fund balance is going away. I think this, this could be the first year that you might have to dip into that. We have never done that in the 12 years that it's been assigned. So you've continued to build your fund balance. Uh, once we go down that slope and we start dipping into that, it becomes non-sustainable at that point. So, from prior slides that I showed you, we have two and a half months' worth of reserves built there. So you, you have a small ability to take from this year and still, still maintain above your, your, your two months, so you'd be at 2.1, one months, I believe. Uh, but beyond that, I can't predict that it is sustainable, because the ability just to hold the, the current fund balance, you're not putting anything back there. You know, on the expense side, there's, there's little to nothing for unexpended, uh, portions on that, and revenue collections aren't running away and coming in significantly higher. That, that covers that as well. So your, your retained earnings is what I always think of it, is your, your ability to take retained earnings and put it in the bank, which is your, your fund balance, it's going away.
It's savings, basically, is what you're saying.
Yeah, it's retained earnings, net, net of operations.
Now, I, I know where, where the overlay comes from. We don't need to necessarily get into that. We can if people want to. Um, is that restricted by state law, or can it go up? I realize we're talking about pennies, basically.
No, this is your undesigned fund balance, so it is, it is not fiduciary. It's not restricted. So the... You, you have balances that are restricted, but this is your undesigned fund balance.
Right, but I'm talking about the, the actual overlay. As, as I understand it, the, the overlay comes from charging a few pennies more in the tax rate than...
By, by state law, you can raise up to 5% above the municipal commitment.
Do you know where we are now? Do you know where we are now?
Oh, we're, we're not even to point.
So, one option for us, I mean, we're brainstorming here, I mean, this is something I, I thought up to come in here. But, is it possible to, to, since it's being squeezed anyways, just for, because of global economic issues, is it wise to look at the percentage of that overlay and, and increase it? I mean, again, my understanding is it's a very small amount impact on the taxpayers, because it's so spread out. But maybe I'm wrong.
Right, yeah, right now, it's predominantly used as a rounding factor for you. So, so your tax bills don't go beyond the two digits? Because once they do, and the, and the, the treasurer's putting out, you know, lien notices for, you know, some squiggly amount, a dollar thirty-eight.
I'm gonna deal with thousands of cents, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so, but if you increase the amount of overlay, again, you can raise up to 5% greater than what your municipal tax commitment is, which is millions of dollars. You can raise that, but, but it impacts your mill rate. You're gonna raise more in taxation in order to put that money into overlay.
But let's, hypothetically, we went from, say we were less than 1%, we went to 2%. And I don't know how much that would raise, but I don't really think that's gonna be that significant an increase. Again, I'm looking at pennies on the mill rate, I think. And this is just a suggestion, it's a brainstorm.
Can you say why you want to do that again? I'm not understanding.
I'm trying to find more money.
It's the wrong direction.
No, no.
We would have to reduce the overlay lower than the .15 or current 16 cents projected, in order to raise more funds. So it'd be, I think it'd be dangerously low. We dropped it significantly last budget cycle, to get down to .15. I forget, oh, I don't have that handy, but it was higher, we did drop it last year, to your point. We'd have to drop it further, which to me, starts becoming a really small. And we're using that overlay this year for the 168 Fire Department, as well as our GA shortage. But so it's drop, you're saying drop the overlay, not increase. We're pretty low, Steve, don't you think?
Yes.
If it, if it's something that's not recommended or not practical, then I'll drop the whole thing. I, I thought maybe it was worth discussing.
So the 2% would raise you just under 1.2 mil, no, $811,000. So historically, that overlay has not been expended, and it goes into your, your fund balance at the end of the year, part of your retained earnings, the last two years, and again this year. You're proposing to use that. It's that tight.
Okay, so this is, I'm hearing, not recommended. This is not a recommended path, do you feel we should pursue in any way? Steve?
You, you can, you can utilize the 250 this year. You'll stay above your, you'll stay at about 2.1 months of available cash flow there. But I couldn't recommend it going beyond this year.
Alright.
Because of the, the lack of sustainability.
Thank you. Thought maybe I was on to something, but not.
Now, the, the other thing, you know, the school department has some reserves, the city has some undesignedated fund, fund balance. You have other reserves that are comprised from your TIF district development funds, you have other monies that are, but those are all fiduciary, they're dedicated, they're not available for other, other means. You've got cash reserves that have been put aside for capital program and such under that. That's all part of your cash flow capacity. So, our community does not borrow, does not take out a tax anticipation note, and such under that. We have, our treasurer does an exceptional job of investing those funds and timing them, so the portfolio rolls out based upon our cash flow needs month, month over month. So we don't have a cash flow problem now. I have been in communities where they created the cash flow problem by, by getting things down so tight. I've had a tax anticipation note, out on a tax anticipation note, so that was not, not fun.
Well, you know, we're not here to mess up the city's financials in the long run. But anyways, as I said, I, I thought it was worth a discussion, probably was.
I think that's great, Bob, thank you for bringing that forward. So, back to Ann's suggestion, how many people feel comfortable?
I hate it, but.
I don't, I don't think I can do it. One person.
Yep, okay, so then the majority of us feel comfortable with doing that part. Got that, Steve?
Okay, I'm gonna take that.
Alright.
Uh, one last thing, because I've added in, so it's 27,000, so, I didn't write down which one is which. One, either the rub generates 20, is anticipated to generate $29,103. The partners is anticipated to generate $28,78, so that gives me a total of $57,181. If you're pulling the $30,000 out for trails, that leaves you a balance of $27,181. So that's, that's how I derive the $27,000 here. So if you want to take that as an offset, Ronnie and I can come back for the April 2nd meeting and tell you where, where we can apply that.
Okay.
That sounds good, yep. Jonathan?
So, just to clarify, Steve, that seems awfully close to the fingerprint scanner. Is that, are we limited to what, I think we're limited to what we can use that for, is that correct?
You are.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you would not be able to use that for the capital for purchase of that fingerprint scanner?
Okay, thank you.
So that brings you down to a municipal reduction of $1,332,702.88.
So Ann, what is the magic number you always like to look at?
Net to taxation.
So what does that look like, Steve?
The municipal, municipal net tax.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. So that gets us to a year-over-year increase on the municipal side of $1,677,893, or 8.91%.
Okay.
So Steve, I'm just gonna ask, if we put the $24,000 back in for the fingerprint scanner, what's that gonna do to the 8.91%?
9.04. That's less than 10 cents, uh, less than 10, no, 1%. I think we should put it back in, but that's my opinion.
I don't think we're 100% done yet, I mean, I'll just, I'm gonna point out that we have to get a school done, because we have to get them to vote. Municipal, we still have things we don't know yet, because the state legislature hasn't finished their work in Augusta, and there might be things that are coming.
This is the luck, this is the luck of going first, chief, we can, we can tinker with this stuff, so.
So I don't, I don't know.
There's still hope.
I don't know if we want to leave the municipal here, Madam Mayor, and, and make sure to look at the school tonight? Because we have to be ready to vote on them next week.
I think we need to do them a favor and talk about that now.
That's what I'm saying, yes.
Yep, okay, so we'll hold everything here?
Yep, we've got some more.
Can I add one last thing? So I have a note over here. So if the state goes to 90% on general assistance, then it's an additional $190,000 in revenue to you. With us going to the $950,000 estimated gross expenditures on the GA side of that. So, in preparation for today's meeting, I talked with Kate DeFour, she's the lead lobbyist for, for the LPC, at the Maine Municipal Association, the Legislative Policy Committee. Kate is very good, she's a very sharp predictive tool, and she just, she couldn't call it. She says, "Steve, I see it at about a 60% from this perspective." The DHHS committee reported out unanimously to support, I forget the bill, the bill number now, but it takes it to the 90%. The governor has the money in the budget, the supplemental budget to support the 90%. It's sitting at appropriations now, they're making the sausage, right? The big negotiations, they're making the sausage there now. She also recognized that the President of the Senate supports this, and that Speaker Rachel Talbot-Ross, who's from Portland, also supports this. So, from all of those perspectives, Kate says she's at a 60% that this will pass. I think I'm a little bit higher than that, but I don't have the wherewithal to say. My poker face is on, let's throw another 190 in there. But I believe, before you go to tax committee, we'll know once the legislature adjourns, this likely will be available to us, and you can put that money in there at that point in time.
Madam Mayor, just two things for preparation for next week, if that's okay. One, I just want to have discussion, further discussion around the revenue for the community paramedicine in terms of accept actual approval of the grants/reimbursements, in terms of how known those income figures are. And then I wanted to, and I know Allison's, I think, here this evening, and I feel like I emailed this, but there's been so many requests, I don't know for sure. The SRE building repairs are only $24,600. I'm wondering, with additional revenue coming forward at the airport, with all of the projects going on there, if that can be covered through airport revenue next year, or perhaps some small? I, I think Allison has her TIF revenue pretty well documented out, but I'm just wondering if there's anything there that we can use to cover that 24/6. Thank you.
Anything else before we move on to the school? Jonathan?
I'll just make a comment that I think 9% is still too high, so I think we've got some, some more work to do, but I understand, you know, we need to get to the school, so we'll, you know, we can still have some other discussions around the municipal line, so.
The great thing is, John, we also have time beyond next week to continue to discuss it and wait for some decisions to be made in Augusta, because we don't have to approve it at the same speed we do the school, which is nice.
On the municipal side.
On the municipal side, yes.
But all those conversations are online.
Just to be clear.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Yes, Nate?
Well, first of all, I just want to apologize for being late. Unfortunately, work kept me a little bit later than I wanted to be.
Well, you do have to stay after in the principal's office, I'm just letting you know that.
I avoided it when I was in 7th grade, when you were my principal, but I'll.
I had to stay after school.
Not me, Madam Mayor.
But I've, I've been thinking about this for a while, about, you know, what, what we can do. And, you know, I think of myself as a, as a homeowner, if I'm, my budget's a little bit tight, you know, maybe I don't replace my vehicle, for example, I continue to make repairs on the vehicle that I have. I know that in the budget for capital improvement, there was discussion about, I know Public Works had a fleet management program, and I also know, oh.
We did discuss that.
Nevermind, I'll review the notes then. If it was discussed today, I'll watch the recording.
You and I speak alike.
Mara did bring that up, and we did figure that out.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, okay. You know, I just love doing that to Nate, just, there's just something so much fun.
He's gonna watch it, and then he's gonna come back with more ideas.
And he was such a cute little kid at the junior high, too.
Was it the glasses?
Now for the superintendent of schools, Matt Nelson, we'll turn it over to you. And first of all, thank you.
If you want to continue cutting things, we'll wait out here all you want.
We are relying on you and your wonderful school committee to do that hard work for us.
I think I have one. Well, and I'd like to thank Matt and department heads, first of all, because they're, and principals, because they're the ones.
Taking a pineapple.
Hold on a second, I'm talking. They're the ones who, principals are the ones who create the budget, and they're the ones who work with the superintendent in order to cut the budget, along with the school committee. And I know how hard this has been on the school committee, removing some of the things and some of the discussions you've had. Probably after today, you'll have to have some more tough discussions. But, keep in mind the community that we're involved in, too. So, Matt, I want to thank you for getting this together for us and getting it to us beforehand, I really appreciate it.
Sure. And I want to thank you for your comments early on, and, and just now also, before things started, another thank you. I have, this is my, I call it my lucky water bottle, I guess. And as you can see, it's been through the, it's been through the paces. It's supposed to say, "Who has more fun than we do?" That's a saying we have sometime. As you can see, the F is gone, and half the N is, and we're losing a few things, but we're hanging in there. We're hanging in there for us to get going. And just another observation before I get going, too. As we've been able to watch the work that you, the hard work that you do, and the hard work you've just done, you can't help but notice the creativity of your trying to work to maximize all of your resources. And to be able to do that in a way that is helping the city move forward, and also being, also being mindful to the taxpayers, and being able to do that. And I, I, I point that out and, and give compliments for that, because that's also something, the approach we use from the school department. As we're coming in, to be able to look at, how can we continue to make our, do the work that we do, and also be able to do that in a way that isn't just always adding and adding? It's trying, that creativity that has to come in to be able to look at things that you have at your disposal, to be able to come back and maximize that. You mentioned it, Madam Mayor, very proud of our team, starting with our, our staff, our administrators, right up to the school committee on what we're doing. We realize the school budget and the impact that it has, that that has on people's budget. We understand that. I was, I was tempted to go down into my office and bring up a poster that I have, and that poster shows the changes in education that have gone on through the decades. And you see a list that started in the 80s, and now you're coming back today that that list has just grown, that we're responsible for. And you know, as a school department, we've become more and more responsible, and I, I will say this, we're pretty good at it, we're pretty resourceful at coming back to be able to come back and meet the needs of kids. That also comes back to bite us, because more gets put onto us. So, we're not coming back when we're adding, and the things that we're doing, that's not something that we're doing that blindly. We're doing that to understand that there's probably laws and things that we have to respond to. And that's not something that just changes by the decades, that's stuff that's constantly changing, for us to be able to do that. And that's the approach that we're trying to be able to use for that. Last time I left off, we started off with a budget that had an impact to taxation of 11.1%. We all knew that that was high, that's too high. And so, we worked on that, and then we came, and when I did the presentation on March 12th, we had reduced that by $450,379. That brought the taxation down from 11.1% down to 8.4%. It's hard for me, because we've been working on this budget for a long time. I don't want to come back and also have to go back and review a lot of the things that I did on the 12th with that. I hope the understanding, you can understand that we did that. I'm trying to be mindful of time, but I also don't want that to come back to bite us, that we're also talking about those impacts that I've laid out for that. Here's a list of the budget reductions that we've done since March 5th. You can see how they're kind of leveled there on tiers. A tier one, on March 12th, there was a tier two on March 12th, that brought us to 8.4%. Our tier three is this evening that I present, we've been able to continue to work to lower our health insurance commitment through Harvard Pilgrim, from 15% to 14%. We also, a behavior interventionist person in the local budget is being offered also as a reduction. But all, there's also a school counselor that we're returning the budget. Like you, you've received a lot of comments, we've received a lot of comments. And I'm proud of that. I'm proud of that, because our community has come back on a lot of different levels to show what were the impacts are and where it's coming back. It's hard for us, the school department, trying to be all things to all people, in terms of what we're looking at for that. So this evening, you're gonna see that 7.7% is where the taxation's lowered here. When you look at the total additions to the budget, we've got them listed out here. You can see in the different categories, we're hoping this is helpful from the last presentation that we had, to break this down, that you'll see that there's one position added, local, and that would be a ESOL teacher, English of a second language. You'll see a number of those positions were currently in the best, in the budget, currently, not in the local budget, but currently covered through ESSER funds. And then you'll also see that some were there through some prior grants. For our pre-K, is we able to bring that on, and also some things from title grants. So as we were looking at those total positions coming back, adding on to the budget, you'll also see there's. also see there's some expense additions as well. So, those are additions to the budget with that. We'll move on to the reductions. These are the reductions that are coming out of the local budget, and then there's also expenses that were also removed from the budget as well.
Question?
Yep.
Talk about the bridge teacher for a moment?
Yep.
Is that, that's not a new, that teacher's been as part of the bridge program? Are you continuing the bridge program?
We're continuing the bridge program. As we look at this, we're comfortable offering that position up. We feel that can meet our current needs, and it's also something that we also is not gonna also negatively impact us being able to expand. Might not be able to expand as fast as we were looking towards. Staffing's been challenging in that area, but that's something that we're comfortable to be able to look at.
Thank you.
So, you adjusted it instead of eliminating it? I'm sorry. So, you basically adjusted it?
Yeah, we're, yeah, it's...
That's okay.
It's out of the local budget.
Yep.
Okay. Then, so where does that bring us? If you kind of take that, those two slides, you'll see what the additions are coming from local, coming from ESSR, coming from grants. You'll also see what the reductions are coming from that. That also includes one month of ESSR funds that we still can be able to expend through the month of September of 2024. So, that'll give us a net staffing of $64,749. You also know that our English language learner population is increasing. We did receive increased funding for that through state subsidy of $185,651 that we're putting towards staffing. Other expenses that we came back, you saw those additions and reductions, there's a net there of minus $2,237. There's also the city, we are adding in the mowing position, transferred from the city over to us. So then, when you look at that net other expenses, and then take out the decrease for the mowing, you'll see the net change there is $252,637, bringing us to that point. So, there's where you see your expense and taxation, starting at 11.1. Steve, if we subtract another $110,004, that'll bring us down to 7.7%. I say that because I know as a school committee, like you, we've struggled, and that's been challenging. Right now, we've reached consensus on 7.7, okay? Beyond that, we have not. And I think you've got, we're lucky to have a very representative school committee that is also trying to meet the needs of our school department, but also realizing the impact on taxation. So, this evening, comfortable bringing 7.7% forward. I want to talk about kind of where we are now, because I think this is important, this is something I know is as challenging as this budget is, that I'm proud of. Remember for us, just in the local budget, for us to turn the page, just to turn it, we were up 5%. We talked about that in your meetings, about how everything costs more earlier in looking at that. Like you, our salaries and benefits remaining to also continue to be competitive for us to do that. If you remember, I also included in that budget was an $85,000 for the paid family medical leave. That was something that we didn't have, we had to come back and account for that by putting the $85,000 in there. When you put the $20,000 in there for the mowing, and then you look at our increased multilingual learners population and the impact there, you're gonna look at, when you take those things out of that, you're looking at expense of 4.9%, which is lower than our turn the page. So, I look at that as, I think we realize that our numbers are high and the impact on our taxpayers. But I also think we can, and I can stand before you, on behalf of the school committee, on behalf of our students and families and staff, and point out that that is a responsible budget going forward for us to be able to do that. There's the summary. I know that was brief. I didn't purposely go into another repeat of coming back. I'll continue to just emphasize that for us, we very much prioritize a safe and engaging learning and working environment for our students and our staff. We want access to opportunities for our students, while at the same time, addressing social, emotional needs. We want our learning environments to be welcoming, accessible, celebrating diversity. And I mentioned that long list of things that are changing in education. We're also responding to that. We're addressing those change and trends in education. And we also have to make sure that we're recruiting and retaining our employees. We're putting an effort in early intervention. You saw what's gonna happen when Chief Anderson was talking about, as well as the impact on the community and the impact of mental health throughout that. We're being able to come back to put resources to that. We're not just always looking to add, we're looking to also try to be creative, restructure, remove if we have to in doing that. I mentioned those laws that are constantly coming at us, that are impacting our ability to have to be able to meet students' needs and also behavioral concerns. The educational landscape out there has changed, and this budget is doing our best to be able to react to that. We don't want to go backwards. I will tell you, as you look at this budget and the list of those, everybody through in our system has come back and been impacted in some way, whether that's our elementary, whether that's our middle, whether it's the high school, the technical center, whether it's maintenance facilities, our custodians, central office. We've all been able to come back to be able to be impacted in a way. I think I heard it earlier, that if everyone's unhappy with us, then we may have done our job. I can tell you with the budget, we've got people right now that are looking at it to say we're concerned about going backwards, okay? But at the same time, we look at it with what we've got here to be able to come back and do this, we feel like we can be able to come back and do what is necessary for us to do that. I'll open it up to questions or comments, or, we didn't, we have a school committee budget works scheduled for tomorrow, because we, in terms of not knowing, we've got to this point, if there's future work that needs to be done, it's gonna be hard, really hard, but we'll roll up our sleeves, we have that scheduled on the books, to be able to come back and do that if necessary.
Matt, I am going to go back to bring something else up, and I think it was five, over $500,000 that we got, the schools got less from the state because of our land being taxed at a higher rate. And I would like to point out that the mayor's coalition, which I'm a part of, Sanford is a part of, feels very strongly that the state has done a disservice to our schools, especially in our poorer communities, because people came in and purchased our land, the land went up in cost, and yet we still have a large culture of poverty that they didn't take into consideration. And Steve was a part of that, attended that meeting with me, where the superintendent from Bitterford actually reported out to us with a lot of wonderful data, so that we could understand that. And so, the mayor's coalition is going to be addressing the state. Why didn't they look at the communities as individuals, instead of thinking old school with school funding, that stuff needed to have changed? So, just to let you know, that the schools received $500,000 less in support than what they normally did.
$567,000.
So, if this, so this 7.7%, if you had received that money, would have been way down, probably around 4% if not lower. But you didn't receive that money, which really Sanford should have, because of our culture of poverty. So, I think you guys getting this down is just phenomenal. I am hoping that the mayors, as a full group, will have some impact on the legislature and getting funding formulas changed, especially for our community and several other communities. Steve made a comment, which I thought was brilliant, so you can write this down, Steve, today's the day I'm saying this, that we don't want to just do it for certain communities, we want to do it as a whole. So, all of the mayors and the people, not every community has a mayor, but whatever their leading legislative group is, will group together and approach the state, so that we could all have a fair formula for whatever community you come from. So, hopefully, that will work. So, I just wanted to share that with you, that statewide, everyone who leads a community is very concerned.
Thank you. And Steve had shared that with me, and I had spoken with Superintendent Ray about that, because that's something that we've realized that impact, we've seen it, and looking at it, where our ability of our citizens and our taxpayers to pay has not changed based on that valuation, okay? And that's, that's at its core, is where it comes back for us, to be able to see that. You know, for us, as a school department, for every 1% increase in expenses, it's a 3.7% increase in taxation. Think about that for a second, right? If we're able to maintain, and we've talked about, Councilor Hanselman mentioned, this is a tough year, we're hoping some of that stuff might be able to be right-sized in some respects. But even for us, as that gets right-sized, that's a huge, huge ask for us to be able to come back to look at that. Now, we're being creative, we're working everything that we can to be able, with grants, and those grants, like yours, are not wide-open checkbooks. We have, we have to be able to make sure we're fitting things in there that meet the needs. Oftentimes, those are things that are not done to replace, it's more of supplement in terms of what learning is going on to be able to do those things. And so, that's for us, a real challenge, as we look at trying to keep that. Now, we look at reserves, we look at carryover, we, those are things that, those cliffs that you talk about, we're mindful of some of those, but we have to be creative in that way to be able to bring that number down the best that we can, because of where you're looking at what the impact is for that.
So, I'm gonna turn this over to the council now for your questions and comments. Pete, you had your hand up first.
Yeah. For one, I want to give you a pat on the back per pupil comparison, it's pretty amazing. Can you talk about that for the average taxpayer? Because my math, you're lower than 1,200 than anybody else in the state per pupil, and that's quite amazing. So, I just, I know we're squeezing you on the budget, but I really think you need to talk about that, so everybody understands what that actually means and the significance of it. So, thank you.
Yeah. Once again, I think, I think it gets back to us being creative and working hard to do the best of what we've got. And that's something, as a community, we should be really, on the one hand, very proud of. I'm proud of the education that we offer with the resources that we come in to be able to do that. You've heard some of the speakers last week in public comment, you've probably received some of the emails to come back and do that, that those are the things that we're doing that I feel very proud of us to do that. I'm not gonna be running around showing these numbers off, to be honest with you, with it, because at the end of the day, I recognize that. But we're not, no one gets into this or sitting in this trying to say, how can we squeeze the schools, or how can we not be able to do things? That's the challenge that we have, is when you take away CTE and the debt service and compare apples to apples, this is 2023, 2024, you see where we land on that. And the next one to us, RSU 57, you know, we're 3.8 million less than that. We're less than, when you look at the average of York County, and when you look at the state average in terms of that, and that's significant. Now, we're a high receiver, we're a high receiver, you see the impact of taxations, we're trying to be as creative as we can come back to be able to do that. But I also think, when we come back to it, that we're trying to be resourceful, we're trying to be able to be good stewards of our taxpayers, to be able to come back to look at how we can get that impact, how can we address the needs that are in front of us to be able to do that as well.
Any other, Bob?
So, the...
Bob, who is a past school board member?
I have seen a few school budgets in my day, but, so, the correct way to talk about this is that a budget is a negotiation, and during a negotiation, none of the parties should be able to, or should leave the table, getting everything that they wanted. So, and that's the definition of a good negotiation, which is, again, what a budget is. Pete, to expound on this a little bit more, and to go past Matt's time here, Sanford has always been traditionally at the bottom of this list, was on the bottom of this list in the 90s, when I was involved in school budgets. Nobody likes it, okay? But, but that's, that's where it works out. And it's not a reflection at all on the quality of education, as you pointed out in the city of Sanford, but I think, as the superintendent pointed out, it's not necessarily something that, as a community, we should be proud of. So, I happen to have worked, I didn't work in Sanford, but I've been associated with Sanford. I did work in 57, and I also worked in Old Orchard Beach, so I've been near the bottom, and I've been near the top of this list. And frankly, I wasn't too impressed with Old Orchard Beach, but we'll leave that for another discussion. So, is, are there any magic bullets here? We talked about additional money possibly coming to the municipality from the legislature. Is there any talk of increased subsidy coming from the state for you guys?
Yeah, so, since our last meeting, we did meet, the York County superintendents meet monthly, and we've decided to also be meeting with the Cumberland County superintendents bimonthly. Because when you look at it, over two-thirds of the students in the state are in our two counties. And you've got everything in that county between oceanfront, lakefront, affluent, to large cities, to CTE centers. And so, at those meetings, we also have representatives from the main Department of Education. So, I asked the question, as we came back last time, I also look around and see that there's additional revenues coming into the state, and so, is those some things that can come back and look at, the things that there might be some more funding with that? The Department of Education was really non-committal, to basically say, they understand the challenges that have come in. From a state perspective, if you see the valuation changes, Steve and I have talked about this, that that's kind of in the state's, in some ways, favor. Why would they want to come back and change some of that? So, what I got was, and there's lobbyists, and there's people that we're also being able to try to work towards, that right now, that budget is in the appropriations committee. And in the appropriations committee, as Steve, I think you mentioned, where the sausage is being made, that's where it's at. I also know that there's been talk about, we have to be careful, as we're always asking for more and more and more, the state would look back and say, we funded up to 55%, which is something we'd never done before. We're providing free lunch and breakfast for all of yous. So, it's not like we're sitting here without anything in terms of that. I don't, I'm not optimistic. There's not the signals that I'm getting, the coming back, to think there's gonna be some more funding coming back. Could be, but as you, when you're in the appropriations things, there's a lot of things that are going on that, in that way, that right now, I'm not getting any information that we could be expecting some more funding.
Do you have a hard number on the health insurance, or are you still working with your best estimates?
That's, we got it down to 14%, and that's a hard number.
It's a hard number.
Yep, and that, on the teacher's side, we also have a, two, couple smaller groups that are on the Anthem plans, and we're working on that. Cheryl, we received an email today giving us our ranges. I said, Cheryl, that's our in, call them and see if they can get some in for that, because we're looking at anything that we can also bring in, but they're not ready to do that. It's probably still gonna be another week or so. I think it's gonna be after next Tuesday, they're talking about April 10th of getting that. When you start looking at that, Bob, we're only talking about somewhere in there, probably $25,030. When I say only, it all matters.
I know. No, I know, I know.
If they do that, but I don't think we're gonna see that.
I was gonna make that point, that at 14%, even if it shifts a little bit, you know, there's not that much there. You've already taken the lion's share of what might be available. You've already taken the lion's share of what might be available in that line. My, my final point, on a good year, 5.5% on the school budget, it wouldn't be a bad budget. And I think this community has passed many school budgets in the 5% range and, and possibly higher, and many other school districts or communities have done that too. So certainly congratulations needs to be afforded to you and all your staff and the school committee and all the hard work that they, that they've put in to this. And that'll be the end of my questions, and we'll just see how things shake out here in a minute when we put all the pieces together.
All right. Anybody else? Jonathan?
Thank you. I just had a couple of quick questions. Back to the social worker questions, I see five that have been added in here. Is there a state requirement for a number of social workers for the number of students that we have?
No, there's not. In terms of the EPS formula that you're coming back to look at, there's not. That's probably an area that you're going to be able to see that there's been a lot of lobbying to be able to come back because that's, the needs that we have are not unique. Those are needs that everyone is being able to come back to private look at. You talk about the valuation impact in the formula. Is there something else that we can be able to look at that as well for that? So the answer is no. I would also say this, right? The social workers, as we come back, that's been one of those areas in this budget that has been talked about and scrutinized, understandably so. I've done research with other school districts to come back and see, okay, knowing that there's not something in the formula, Jonathan, that would show what that is, how, what are you doing to be able to do that? Because I want to make sure of, of what we're coming back, are we going to be looked upon as a real outlier to other schools, other similar schools to us and our size? And the answer is no. I came back, actually, as we did that research, even looking at that to say, you know what? As we look at this coming back as a priority, that is something that other districts have, and they also have resources allocated in those areas. So I don't feel like that that is something that is going to be an outlier, right, for that. I feel like as it comes back, that has reinforced the need that we've identified and the priority that we've placed on this.
So one way to go out, the mayor's, the mayor's coalition's way of trying to get funding is, hey, you need to add social workers to the formula.
And that is one of the things we did bring up at the meeting to add. But that won't happen next year.
Yeah.
So it's going to be in the future. And to let you know, social workers have a number that they can safely handle. So it's a little different than the school thing. It's not the same as school counselors. School counselors can do like a whole grade, 100, but social workers can't because they do one-on-one meetings with kids all the time, and then they do some group work on them. And, and knowing because of COVID, our, our whole thing has changed. The anxiety, in fact, they had a study on this morning on the education, you know, one of those things I listen to. They, they talked about the fact that anxiety is huge now amongst our children, and the suicide rate has increased tremendously. So I think you might find the social workers that you just added is probably going to be low, and hopefully you can handle all the needs that are out there because it's definitely needed. And Jonathan, you had a hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I had one other question. Thank you. There was some talk about a sweetser position. Can you speak to that and whether that's able to offset any of these or whether that's something separate?
That was another consideration because that was what was in the past, what was utilized. And what we found over time is that those resources are not as available as they once were, and there's limitations in terms of what they can offer, and the need is greater than what that can come back to be able to address. And so that's something we also, our team, as we looked at that, that was a consideration that we came back because we wanted to make sure of, are there other ways that we can make these needs? And that was coming back with the, the work that we did in the research of what we're coming back and finding, that that's not the case. And we're not encouraged that that's something that is just a momentary situation. That's going to be something that, and you've seen that other schools are also pivoting away from that as well in response to, it's not meeting the need.
Okay. Thank you. And we've looked at potentially, or I assume you've looked at potentially having the social workers be able to fund, or I don't know if there's any way to charge like Medicare or Medicaid or one of those, those sort of things that, that may be available for this sort of, it kind of, to me, it seems like it falls under, you know, a medical type of thing that should be billable to something, you know, whereas the primary purpose of this, the school is to educate, you know? And I, I understand that, you know, there are issues with, with students and, but it would be nice to not have to have that fall on the taxpayers.
Yeah, understood. I didn't bring my notes with me, okay? Because that was something else we looked into. I spoke about that with the Cumberland County and York County superintendents, and I spoke with the main Department of Education as well. Is there ways that we can come back to be able to, is there anything through revenue or billing that we'd be able to come back and do? And the, the short answer is no, because of the restrictions of what you can be able to bill for and what that would actually cost and some of the impacts on the licenses, that no one's doing that. It's not like we're coming back to be able to say, we're missing out on this. Is that just because there's, it's more work? We could restructure in ways to be able to do that, but it's not coming back to be able to have something that that's going to be a benefit to be able to do that. The, the short answer is no. I've looked into it. I wish I brought my notes with me to be able to better articulate that.
I did check into social workers who work either for an organization or privately, and they can do 10 visits at 45 minutes a visit, and that's it for the whole year per child. That would be it. So that probably wouldn't be enough for some of our kids' needs at all. That's a different, not a school, that is somebody privately billing insurances and stuff. Yeah.
Well, if, if it would be possible to at least get some of that offset, I think that would be helpful from a budgetary perspective.
Agreed.
So if there's any avenues we could try to push to help move that along or see if we could talk to the legislature somehow, but appreciate that. Thank you.
And I'll keep pushing it at the mayor's level, Jonathan.
Okay. Thank you.
Ann? Steve?
I would like to comment on the school.
Sure. Do you want to do it now or do you want to hear Ann first? Go ahead, Ann.
Steve's like, what's Ann going to say?
He never knows.
Do I get a take back card?
No, take it back.
I, I have a clarifying question and a couple of comments. And the question, which I just want to confirm, I heard you correctly, Superintendent Nelson, that a majority of our school committee is in consensus, I understand it hasn't gone to vote officially, but is in consensus that the 7.7% is the best balance between community needs and school needs?
It's very challenging to get to that, but I feel comfortable presenting what I have this evening in terms of, I think there's some school committee members who also look at it that the taxation is probably still too high. But I also think that we wanted to see what it was in conjunction with the city's budget to be able to come back and be able to look at that, with that. But I think you're looking at the changes that we've recommended to this point, people are comfortable with that. Whether or not there could be more or coming back, there's some real challenging work ahead of us if that was to be the case.
So there's not a majority consensus on the 7.7 net increase to taxation?
No, I think there's majority.
Ann, you understand majority means if there are five of them?
Yes, I understand majority, mayor. That's an easy one.
Well, I didn't, I wanted to make sure everybody knew that that wasn't everybody by the majority. It just means over half.
I hope our council understands what a majority is. And then my comments are this, I'm, and I'm just going to be really transparent, right? I'm struggling because I was really, I'm really looking for a net to taxation of closer to 7% based on a lot of different factors for our school department net increase, which would be a, just under 30% reduction from what I have is the, if we were accomplishing, excuse me, let me start over. If we accomplished an additional $100,000 reduction to the school department appropriations or net to taxation, it would get us to about a 7% increase for our school department, which would result in about a 30% reduction to our overall community net to taxation or about 11 cents off of our mill rate. And I'm getting in the weeds a little bit here.
Well, 7% would be $116,350.
I'm giving you some leeway on the 16.
Okay.
I have that same, I agree with you though, I have that same number. And so if we, if we did that, it would bring the taxes on, on a property of about, with a value of $300,000 down about $33 a year, which Steve would say is negligible, right? You know, and Steve can comment in a minute. It's a fairly small impact to a home of $300,000 in terms of reducing it further from the current possible numbers. So my struggle is, the city is at, we're at 9% right now? I think we're at 8.3 if I put in, so where, you're doing better in a sense than we are in terms of your impact to net to taxation. So I feel like, is it even fair for me as a counselor with our budget looking like what it is, to ask the school committee to go back and the school department to go back and find $100,000? And so I'm not sure that it is, is kind of where I'm at. And again, I'm being really transparent. And from a community perspective, you know, is that $33? Is that make it or break it? You know, we heard, we've heard from people that it is, make it or break it. We've heard from others that say, I'm fine with it. I support the school department. Bring it up another half a million. So I, I don't really know the answer. It's, it's all challenging. And in the end, our school committee and, and the school department has to do the heavy lifting of, of what is that best balance between school and, and community needs? So I, I guess I'm just saying that I'm, I'm struggling, and I'm struggling to ask the school department for more when I'm not sure we're going to get down as far as we should. And there's a level of like fairness to that for me. So that's where I'm at, if that's helpful or not at all. Maybe Steve has the magic words for us.
Can I, I, I just, thank you. What I would say also for us is, we try to look at what we're providing and try not let a number drive what we're doing. And that, and that's, now that being said, that it's hard not to do that. And so I think we've done the work to get to where we are at 7.7, where that is meeting the needs, we can. To go from that to that next level for us is going to be really challenging. It's been challenging to this point, but I think that's getting to a point there where it was going to be, based on the information and everything that we've heard, the impact there is going to be piece. And that's why we've tried to stay away from the percentage piece and try to look at, does this pass the straight face test with everyone in terms of what the challenges in, in everyone's reality is? And that's what we've done.
Steve?
Yeah, so I'm not going to speak to the, you know, the $30 one, one way or the other. What I wanted to speak to is, we've done so much work, and let me back up. I know you stare at me many times and say, could we stop talking about the state? You talk about the state too much. It's significantly impacting. Much of our authority that you have as counselors and the school, school officials and such, it's delegated to you by the state. We only get to do what the state allows us to do, and that's very frustrating for me. I'm a control person, right? I want to be able to control my destiny. But the state said, nah, you can only do what we tell you you can do, and it's only up to here, and then after that. Well, and then we're going to take that back from you. But without getting on that soapbox too, too much tonight, it's so important, we've made some significant strides as far as our school funding formula is, is concerned. A, the school department maximizes that formula use, I think, better than anybody else, and thank you very much for that. So excellent job in that regard. We've made changes just on the timing of the CTE programming, how, when, you know, it used to be a year, year after the fact. We've made strides there. Those strides came from, we're having the dialogue around building the, the new high school, and the state said, you can't, you can't use our funding the way, in that way that you want to. We changed that. We built the school that they told us we couldn't, right? From there, there was a huge recognition, Amory Mistracchio, trying to remember, was she a state rep at that time or was she still, I don't think, still a town coun, still a city counselor at that time? When we're going into schools construction.
Yep.
Right?
She switched around during that.
Right, right. She, so she's, she's been a counselor, she's been a state rep. My, my theme here is, you know, who represents us matters. Because in that process, we discovered it was, it was actually detrimental, some of the CTE programming, because of when we were going to get the funding in and who was paying what. And we were crying, hey, that's, that's BS. We're, we're the regionalized entity here and we're getting dinged for it, right? So Amory Mistracchio was part of that. She became state rep. We all know she's very good at what she does. People listened to her, right? So she got that changed, that she was part of that mechanism that got that changed for us. So we made huge strides there, so it doesn't impact us negatively anymore. Back to Matt's earlier point, so I forget the superintendent's name again, the presenter to the mayor's coalition.
Superintendent Ray, Jeremy Ray.
Did a fantastic job. My disappointment is that I don't think the mayor's coalition has good representation right now in their, their advocacy. They're not making recommendations, so I had to speak up. Because I, I've been here, I've seen the history, even though York and Cumberland County, we should be massing together because we have the Southern Maine issues. When I was in Northern Maine, I spent all my time defending myself against-
Yes.
-you folks down here, and now I'm down here and I have to defend myself, right? So, you know, you, you-
And they're still defending up there as well.
You're darn right they are. You swing the bat for who you're playing for, right? So for them, it's not, it's not about the, the economic, economically disadvantaged, it's more about the offsets that they get dinged for, for payroll, right? When they, when they only get 92 cents on the dollar and we get, you know, a dollar 11 or something like that for some districts and whatnot, it's very, that's the detrimental impact for them. So unless you bring them along, even though we have two thirds of the state's population in York and Cumberland County, they don't always vote as a block yet. We need to get, that's, that's the improvement that needs to be made. You can't outvote all of the rest of the state in that. So unless you bring something to the table to them, which the state, DOE's not going to make a recommendation for the people they work for, the governor and such under that, to take on additional cost under EPS, yeah, under EPS, because it's going to cost the state more. What is the true cost of education? We have to continue to hammer on that, that the true cost of education is not reflective in EPS. That formula's been stagnant now for what? Oh gosh, 20 plus years? You know, I'm, I'm going back to the even richer years and all that sort of stuff when, when we changed from GPA to EPS. They haven't come up with what the true cost of education. They say they're paying 55% of the true cost of education as defined by EPS. I would, I will sit here all day long and say, they haven't, that is not reflective of the true cost of education, especially in large service centers, as we're being impacted by economically disadvantaged, English as a second language and a whole host of other things. So yes, there needs to be work on that, no different than on the municipal side, it's revenue sharing. We got to fix that. They continue to break that. They broke it for decade, over a decade now, and it still hasn't clawed back to where it should have been in the original premise and such under that. So I'm glad that we're starting to get some advocacy here in York and Cumberland County working together on school funding. I'll try and band them together on, on other aspects for revenue sharing and such under that because it is significantly impactful. If we had the revenues that we should be seeing from the state, we'd have less of a conversation here today. So thank you for allowing me to, to say that, so.
And Steve, when we were talking to other communities, weren't they amazed that we were down under 10%? We were even considering that? Because most of them were above 10%. So I think we're doing pretty good.
When I was talking with Kate DeFor today, she, again, she's my numbers lady, lead lobbyist at, at the LPC. She's also a select person in the town of Hollowell that Gary Lamb is now managing down there. Hey, how's Gary doing? He's doing great. So anyways, it's Kate, how's it coming out for you, for you this year? She says, we're going over 2 mil. I said, what's that for you? She said, about 11%. She said, we can't do less. So those are the kind of numbers that I'm consistently hearing. And I know with the amendments that we've talked on the municipal side, we haven't gotten there yet and whatnot, we're, we're going to be lower than most communities this year. I know it's still impactful for us, but when we get to, to, to look at the numbers, you know, I like to look at those numbers too because for me, it's about setting the priorities. And I know on the municipal side, when I come back to you next week with, when you talk about further adjustments and- talk about further adjustments and stuff like that, I want you to look at the history, right? When I look at, and if we could put this graph, this, the Excel up here for just a moment, oh, these are school numbers, Mr. Ray gave to us. So let me expand this up, because it's going to be hard for you to see. When we look at these, these numbers, this is both the municipal and the school. This is the last sixteen years of municipal expense, and what the net commitment was, school, and the net commitment was, and then we started to get the year-over-year change. There's been a consistent pattern here in, in the city. Like to go back to nine-ten, wouldn't we? You know, point three-six on the city side, and zero percent on the school. But when you get into the years, and this is what I've, I've talked about to you consistently, you can see that there have been years where the school is up, or the city is up, but not both at the same time. This has been an extraordinary year for us. So you can see like fourteen-fifteen, the city was down eight tenths of a percent, school's up five point seven. I don't have what the net overall is for the city, but that's just there. Next year, city's up three point one-eight, school's down at point nine-two. Pretty, pretty even year here, two and three percent. You can watch this pattern go along into, into current years. And when you look at these last years, you know, these twenty-two, twenty-five numbers, these, these are wrong, these were the raw numbers we started out, it's not where we're at tonight, so I'll, I'll change these and get the, the reflection in there. But you can see like in twenty-one, twenty-two, city was up six point five-five, school was down nearly five percent. The next year, city was down point oh-six percent, school's up four point nine-three. City, two point seven-eight, school at six. This year, just absolutely stinks. But again, these were the old numbers, I'll, I'll go in and change these, and we'll see what our, our sixteen-year trends are. But that's why I talk about one year over the other, the school has capacity, or the, or the city has capacity, and we trade that off to get to our net taxation, our bottom line. One of my discouragements on the, the city side, is when you look at that six-year history, we were down, we were barely up, and this year is impacting. That's that carry forward from using, using reserves, using reserves, and now we're taking the hit. So that's where I want to continue to talk to you about sustainability, and putting in the small amounts incrementally over the years, rather than try to hold, you know, when the city was down to less than zero, then at two percent, and now at a large increase. You're going to pay it at some point in the future. So I just want to continue to look at sustainability for both the city and the school, how our two budgets combine towards that. And that's why when we're talking about these, these impacts on the EPS funding formula, revenue sharing, and other aspects, it's significant for us to be mindful of, of taking proper actions on those going forward in the future. So, for all of the changes that we've made to date, in here, I have all of the amendments that you had approved for earlier on the, on the municipal side, so the one point three million dollar reduction here. On the school side, I've taken the hundred and ten thousand and four dollars off your expense line here. And that brings us to a tax rate calculation of a dollar twenty-three increase, or eight point one-zero percent. I know Council Hanselman, you wanted me to hold back any change in valuation in here to specifically offset taxation. When I bring that in, I add the new value that the assessors have booked, and this is new value, not adjusted value, of twenty-five million, seven hundred thousand. That gets us to a dollar six on the mill rate, or six point nine-seven percent year-over-year change. What does that do for our homeowners? You can see that the hundred thousand dollar tax card goes up by six point nine-seven percent, or seventy-nine dollars and nineteen cents. The middle curve here is that three hundred thousand dollar home, goes up again the six point nine-seven percent, or two hundred ninety dollars and thirty-five cents. Which when we started, that was nearly five hundred dollars. It was four seventy-seven, and change. So that's where we sit currently with the amendments that have been made here this evening, with the valuation changes that, again, the, the assessor has already booked this in. He thinks there might be another million dollars there, and I don't have as of yet the changes that will come in on, homestead will be relatively stagnant, that percentage stayed the same. This is another one of those, you know, we are pushing the granite boulder on the homestead, we're getting a ramp up, going three percent per year. That stopped this year in exchange for the state funding the, the senior property tax stabilization fully that they granted, that they stopped that ramp. So we'll have to fight hard next year, in the long session, to get that ramp to go back to the three percent per year, which would decrease our net taxation significantly. And we don't know the Betty, or Better, changes down here, that's the personal property categories and whatnot. The TIF at just, just about two point two million dollars is relatively stable. So that, that shouldn't change, impact us. And then where the overlay comes in, you know, at three ninety last year versus what will come in this year, we'll have some offsets to this bottom line as well. I do have the increased county valuation in here for tonight's numbers, so if nobody was using that before, it's up by fifty-six thousand, four hundred dollars. That's the estimate they've given us, they haven't finalized that, obviously, they're just starting into the budget process. But this is what the county manager is proposing at this point in time.
But we don't have the intention to do any more.
Correct, we do not.
Offset some of our expense.
I can, I mean, I can drop that in, just to show you what that, what that does for us, but it would, it definitely would not be insignificant.
Okay, are there other comments on, so we know where we're at? Nate?
First of all, thank you for the presentation, Superintendent Nelson. I've been taking mental notes about how to be a better advocate after watching your, your presentation today, I think that's, that's, that's a great service you provide. I also do appreciate that you listened to, you know, your school board members and the public, and adding that counselor position back in. I know it's, it's a bold thing to do when we're coming here telling you to cut, 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 and you, and you add. And now I can also see that from, it, it's kind of an interesting number, that the, the remaining ESER funds that you're going to have for the month of September, almost offset that counselor position, almost exactly. My only thought in, into that, kind of leading towards what Counselor Hanselman was saying, was that, you know, or, just to say that, that seventy-five thousand dollars is going to come due next year.
Yep.
And so, I'm not necessarily asking you to cut, find cuts to get the seventy-five thousand dollars, but I would like, through your discussions of the, the budget tomorrow, to see what we can do to offset that as much as possible, just given that that funding's not going to be there next year. And maybe it will be through some other venue, but not through ESER. Thank you.
Now, Nate made that comment, but we need, before we have him do something, we all need to agree that that's what we want him to do.
That's great, that's my, that's my
Yeah. So I just, I didn't want to go on without her making a decision about that. Jonathan, are you talking about what Nate just said?
Yeah, I want, I'll comment on that, that's okay.
Okay, thank you.
And then I had a couple of other comments.
We have to stick with that first, so he knows what to do.
Okay, well, I don't, my understanding is we can make, we, we have a decision on the total number, but we can't really direct on any of it, one particular thing. So, I, I saw that more of a, a comment to, something to think about, but
Okay.
that's my two cents on that, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else's comment? Bob?
So, I mean, I want to ask the council, overall here right now, is the concern about the percentage increase in the schools, or is it the overall percentage increase combined? Where, where do the concerns lie?
Jonathan?
Um, I
Both could be an answer, Jonathan.
I would like to see both reduced, to some extent, at least.
Could you weigh that a little bit?
I think we've had at least two or three slices at the school budget pie. And we've, we've touched on, we've done a little bit with the municipal budget, but I think there's some more work to be done there. So, I think both could use some, some more scrutiny, and see if we can squeeze out a little bit more to get both down a little bit extra, the more we are.
Anyone else's comments? Bob is your hand up, or?
Nope.
Okay, sorry.
Let me see.
Yes, Pete?
I agree with what Jonathan said. I believe that we should tighten it up a little bit more, see what we can do. Municipality side, we will have more budget meetings. Yeah, if you can squeeze a little more, if you can, that would be awesome. Thank you.
Maura?
I think it's a little open-ended, just saying squeeze a little more, I, I mean, okay, so, I, I get that. I mean, Ann was very honest and said, hey, we can't ask from, you know, it's kind of hard to ask for them to give more than we are willing to give, so that we're kind of at a standstill at this point. I suspect Ann would have a magic number. Do you guys have a magic number? She, she can give a magic number, can you guys give a magic number?
I just want it down.
Down where?
Okay.
I believe that, that this is too high for the taxpayers, so we got to
Oh, sorry, we got to hit both sides again, we got to bring this down a little more, this is too high.
Where?
I would like to drop at least a half a percent more.
Okay, so you want to be like seven point two or something?
If that's the total that we're at, yes, I want to drop more. I, I definitely believe we have to at least look at it to dig in a little more for the taxpayers. That's, that's where I'm at. And if that's the final number, that's the final number we're at, but I'd like to dig.
Bob, you have a comment?
Yeah, I mean, Pete, when you talk about a half percent, you're talking about overall or just on the school side?
No, not the, the, the overall, not, not just beating up schools out, I don't want to do that to you. I want to look at, we have another municipality meeting, so I would like to look at that, and then see where we're at. And if I got to squeeze you after, we'll squeeze you after.
No, no, we can't do it after, because they've got a deadline that they have to meet. So, Ann?
Well, and I don't know if this is helpful, and Steve, I, can you PDF this huge thing to us later? Am I, because I'm tracking, as you know, and my numbers are just slightly off, so I'm missing something, I'm sure. But, it, we're roughly, Steve, at the municipal side at, at eight point three percent increase, is that, is that what you're showing? Municipal only? Just to get our bearings, or eight point nine, okay, so I, for some reason, I'm a little bit lower. And the school's at seven point seven, we agree. So, I think, Council of Transmonting, or for all of us, you know, my concern, and I guess, you know, to Steve's earlier presentation, we've taken turns, right, where one of us is up, one of us is down, and, so we can't necessarily say it's a fifty-fifty kind of split. Also, more of the overall budget, just slightly more, over the overall net to taxation in city versus school. So like, percentage-wise, I'd be curious how far we're willing as a council to move from that eight point three. Like, are, are we going to drop two hundred and sixty thousand more dollars to get down to seven percent on our side, roughly? It's, these rough numbers, but.
Maybe we can look at the positions that are not filled, that we could put off till the following year, some of the positions, I don't know how Steve feels, I'd rather have him look at that, and, and see if we can save some money there, and that might, that might do it right there. But that, that would have to go through Steve, I would say, on that.
I've presented you slides on that, and, and gave you the statement that there's, there's little to no opportunity there.
Is there, I would like to give the schools, they're, they have a scheduled meeting tomorrow, are we asking them for more, or are we letting their side ride at the, at the number they've presented to us?
Jonathan?
I'd like to see a little bit more on the school side, I'm not sure what they can get to.
They, they got to have a number.
All right, I'd like to see it under five.
Under five, net taxation?
Yeah, for the school side.
Okay, I would never agree to that, that
Well, I'm just saying that that's, that's what I'm hearing from people, so that's what I'm passing along.
I would be very comfortable at seven point two. But I would also bring the city side down. So, but we've got more time to talk about that, but I think we have to take a look at ours and bring it down. Could anybody tell me what seven point two would, Ann?
Eighty-three thousand, five hundred, forty dollars and twenty-six cents.
You are so good at this, I'm so impressed.
Cheryl has it probably too.
Oh, okay. So that I would be very comfortable at for the school side, knowing that that might be just one social worker. Because I know you guys were all struggling with that position. So, I would be, I'd be very comfortable with, so I'm going to propose, well, we got to wait till next week, but next week I would be proposing seven point two. And are other people comfortable with that, or, Pete?
I'm very comfortable with that, I think that gives you enough to operate your school budget on, is it pretty close?
No.
They need millions more to operate the school, I mean, this, this is, that's what they're saying. They're, they're sitting here saying, we've cut millions to get to here, eighty-three thousand, okay, but we could use a million more. I mean, that's basically what they're sitting there saying. Read the room.
Bob?
I, I think it's unnecessary. I mean, when you roll the revenues in here, that are potentially coming in on the municipal side, the, this, you know, I guess we know, but, take that, that amount of money and push it into the overall percentage increase, I, I don't even think you're going to see a move, you know, for both municipal and schools. So I think this is an exercise in futility, and I think it definitely is on the municipal side, because you, you know you're going to get additional revenues, that are going to help push the overall tax rate down. This is why I asked the question, is the issue just the school budget, or is it both? Because if it's pushing them down on both, we're going to get additional revenues that's going to help this, this tax rate, we just went through that exercise. I mean, it's not written in stone, but we're going to get something, and it's going to push this down, probably greater than what we're asking the, the schools to reduce. So, we're actually reducing, the municipal people are actually, municipal side is reducing the overall impact of this budget without touching the, the school budget. So we're working in partnership, as we get more money, it's going to help the overall budget without reducing the schools, you know.
So Bob, you're happy with seven point seven?
I'm happy with seven point seven.
Okay, Maura?
So the way I look at the schools is, they're one of our greatest assets. You cut them so much that they're not keeping the average and upper kid spectrum happy. Those families don't want to live here. That's, that's a reality. So, cutting, you're, when you're only looking at taxation, and you have to, I think you have to look at both sides, when you're only looking at taxation, is actually sometimes doing a, a disservice to the community. And you're doing a disservice probably to the same people who are telling you to cut, because they're going to be the first person to complain about our schools. And so be very careful when you say lots of pe, like, if you're saying lots of people are telling you this, if you're, if you're talking to like five people, get out in the world a little bit more, because I'm getting it from both sides. I have parents who are saying to me, I'll pay whatever I need to, because I want our schools to be good, because I want it for my kids. Then I have my seniors, more, it's a struggle. I get that. And so there, there are two sides of the coin that I look at. Where is the school comfortable? Where can they get the job done? Where they, where they reach a balance for all students? I heard that parent last week who said, the, my kids don't need the social workers, but the social workers make a difference to the environment of that school, when there are so many kids who need them. And it makes a difference for my kids, even though they don't need them. So I listen to that, and I hear that from other parents. And, so I'm happy with the seven point seven, I think we have a little bit more, unfortunately, I think we have a little bit more work to do on the school side, I'm, I'm praying the G A
On the municipal side.
Municipal side, sorry. I'm praying the G A, they actually fund us to ninety percent. I mean, just like the, the school, where they're dealing with the English as a second language, or whatever new phrase they've given it, we're dealing with, you know, G A hits, and all these unexpected homeless hits, all the unexpected things that are coming in, and are hitting our budget with no money on the other side. So, and that's what's impacting our budget a lot as well.
And Maura, you did, thank you, because you did remind me, when you said, are you hearing from five people, or are you hearing from more? I have to say that the majority of emails that I have received, and text messages, and I don't like now people got my cell phone number, but
Put it on the website.
More of them want, especially on the school side, stuff in, not out. So, I'm actually going to say, I will probably also back seven, what it is actually gonna say I will probably also back what it is now, 7.7. So, other people, where are you standing? Nate?
Sure. So, we were talking about 7.2. I mean, I think I kind of kicked it off by talking about numerical value rather than percentage, because I know that was something that school department was talking about. They don't look at percentage per se, they look at the dollar amount, and that's kind of what we have to look at as well. We are ultimately giving the full dollar amount, they get to decide how they disperse that. 7.2 did fall within what I was suggesting, given what I mentioned, the $75,000 from the Esra funds. It's actually a bit more than that to be, you know, 7.2 overshoot what I was initially talking about. And part of my analysis tonight, unfortunately, is that, you know, I wasn't here for the first hour of the presentation, so I don't know what you all talked about from the municipal side, but I do recognize it as a partnership. And so, in terms of what number would I approve or not approve, I think that's a little bit arbitrary for the school side in terms of percentage. That's why, when I made a suggestion, I said, if we can at least have a discussion about what we can do to offset that $75,000 as much as humanly possible, knowing that it may not be all $75,000 of it, knowing that that funding's going in. So, I would support 7.2%. You know, I would like to sort of just see what the discussion is at the budget workshop that they have tomorrow, to sort of see what can be done, if anything. You know, 7.7, I just wouldn't know that off the top of my head until I sort of review the...
7.7 is what it is now?
What it is now, absolutely. I just don't know if I would support that right now, because I want to see what cuts we were talking about from the municipal side, which I just have to re-watch.
So, given that it's kind of a split, can you guys just have ready what would be lost at 7.2? Or do you just, you know, or should we, I mean, are we at 7.7 or are we at 7.2? And 7.2...
7.7.
Yeah. So, I think that, in the spectrum, is probably 7.2.
Ann?
From Ann down, I think it might be 7.2, if I were to guess.
I'm at 7.2.
Here...
Or something. Because we're gonna get, we're gonna hit our side hard. Sorry.
We're gonna hit our side hard as soon as we go over it. I'm torn now between the 7.2 and 7.7. So, if we can make it up on the municipality side, I don't want it.
You guys aren't doing the greatest job cutting on the municipal side.
Yeah, I'm looking.
You guys are like, oh, let's get a lift and let's get the, you know, fix-up and stuff.
All right, I'm gonna make the hard decision. I'm gonna stay with 7.7 then for the school budget. Give them a break and be done.
Okay. Any, Ann?
So, we now have a consensus, majority consensus of 7.7. So, what I will say to our school department and our school committee is that, when you approach your discussion tomorrow, and you look at Tier 3 and the additional items listed in Tier 3, because I'm sure there are some, like there would be in our discussions of different cuts, if there is anything there that you can humanly, that you can balance out this tough season with, that shifts the needle slightly, I would just ask our school committee to consider that. And I, at this point, will, assuming we don't go higher than 7.7, I will back what the school committee brings forward to me.
Thank you, Ann. Any other comments? Matt, do you think that's clear enough?
Clear as mine, clearly mine.
It's clearer, but yes.
Okay.
No, it's challenging. And I don't, I don't look at it even as a negotiation. We bring things forward that we feel we can stand behind. And it's been challenging, because all the reasons that have been identified for that. And so, I will say, I'm not gonna pull a rabbit out of the hat tomorrow night. There's not, we don't have that. Things have been looked at. So, there's gonna be impacts that we've talked about, that at the end of the day, there's a struggle with that. We'll continue to look at that in good faith, to be able to see what we can do to bring that down, just as you're gonna do the same on the municipal side.
Sort of hanging legislators by their thumbs and making them give us more money, right?
And then Mayor?
Yes?
Can we take all the memorial gym expenses out of our percentage increase?
Really? Whose is it really?
I'm teasing.
A little jabby.
And that is a, but that's a community asset we have to protect, so it's a tough one.
Why, it's a team effort, guys.
So, we're done with the school part. Do you want to go back and take a look at some more figures on the municipal side? Okay, all right. So, let's pull that back out. Thank you, Matt.
Can I speak for just a moment?
Yes, you may.
This is off-topic, but I want to clarify some of my remarks that I made when I spoke about Old Orchard Beach, my former place of employment.
You better not go back there.
No, no, I'm not going back there. I'm retired. No, the, Old Orchard Beach is a great school district. It has, I mean, I enjoyed my time there. It has great teachers, great schools, great kids, great community, all the way around. My remark was about the fact that Old Orchard Beach, RSU 23, is what's called a property-rich district. People don't like it when I use that term, but that's what they are, like Kennybunk and Yarmouth and Falmouth and all those kind of places. As a result, they don't receive hardly any funding from the state. In fact, the technical term is they receive zero funding from the state, but they get some kind of minimal amount. I don't know what it is. I think it's less than a million dollars a year. So, they have to raise all their money for the municipal expenses, that includes the schools, from the local property tax rate. So, you have to think about that. We're raising taxes here for the schools. 75% of that percentage increase is paid by the state. So, locally, we're raising about 25%. They're gonna raise the whole percent over there. So, it's difficult for the community to keep up. That's what I was referring to, was the actual funding that, and how that works over there, very different from Sanford, very different from SAD 57, which is where I spent the majority of my career. And I don't really think it works out in the best interest of the community. But, I'm not a community member. I don't live there. So, that's really just my opinion. But, it had nothing to do with the quality of the schools, or the kids, or the personnel, or anything like that. They were all fantastic in the two years that I was over there. So, I say hi to Superintendent Suddy. I think he's still there? Is he still there? Yeah? Still living Sanford?
No.
I think, no, he doesn't. Oh, well, 50%. So, anyways, I say hi to Superintendent Suddy and all my other administrative buddies over there, and I wish them all well.
Thank you, Bob. We're gonna take a five-minute recess.
We're gonna reconvene the meeting, please. And Steve, if you could pull up the sheet again, and we can start to go down through.
Madam Mayor, before we dig in, I don't know, or you tell me when it's appropriate, but Councilor Stockpole and I are chatting about, just confusion about additional revenue sharing, because I thought it was only like 12,000 and something, and Councilor Stockpole was hearing a million something. So, could we clarify additional revenue?
Sure. Actually, Steve, yeah, or one, whichever it needs to be.
It's the 12,588.
Is that what you wanted to see? It's right there in that line?
He hadn't put, he just, and he just put in the new valuation.
Maybe the confusion was the additional...
Maybe, but the evaluation, okay, so I get it. I guess I'm barking up the wrong tree here. All right. So, the additional valuation brought down the overall percentage. That's what we're looking at, another million dollars and possibly more, correct?
The additional valuation brought you down about 17 cents.
Yeah, and that's not in hand, but likely.
So, the $25,700,000, the assessing department has booked that into Vision already.
All right.
So, they've already been in the field, assessed that, and put it in.
Is it, oh, the additional million was valuation, that he might have another million in valuation, but that wouldn't, that's just valuation?
Yes, but that will, that will, if somebody's house goes up, they're gonna pay more taxes, it was just gonna give us more revenue.
No, this, any change in valuation is new valuation. It's not a change for the market, adjustments to homes and stuff like that. I'm not anticipating the assessor's going to change the residential values this year.
Okay, this year?
Right.
Okay.
So, you know, in past years, I've had a very complex analysis...
You might not get that fingerprint scanner, Chief. We'll try.
In past years, a very complex analysis of the by-category, what percentage changed, factored that in and such under that.
Since I had the mic, I would like to put the 23,000, whatever, back in for the fingerprint scanner on the city side, municipal side.
Do we have other people who want to put that back in? Okay, got Pete?
Yes, I do.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
We're never going to get there.
Okay, that is not it. It's, that doesn't get, sorry, guys. Good try. All right, so what else? You gave us this Tuesday correction sheet and it was the.
Community paramedicine.
Community paramedicine. So could we go, is any of this going to impact this in a positive way?
So what I've got up on the screen right now is the.
Could you tell us what's already in the budget and what's not in the budget?
Yes.
That would be helpful.
The way you have amended your budget tonight incorporates all of this. So you have the expense of 136,620 with the community paramedic position. You've accepted that as an increase in your expense. The 364,000 under revenue, that is program revenue. That's the 150,000 that we anticipate with the passage of the legislation to be able to do treat and place. The 114,000 maintenance stabilization, that's been approved.
That's, that's a hundred percent certain. That's done.
If you let, let me finish, please. That's been approved by both the House and the Senate. The funding is in there. They haven't cut us the check for that yet. All right, so we're still waiting on that. That's the EMS stabilization grant. That's, that's, was put in place because many of the smaller rural EMS systems are failing financially. So that, that's to be paid out.
We were told that that was approved, weren't we, Steve, at the mayor's meeting?
We just haven't received the money.
Yeah, okay.
And then the 100,000 for the main EMS grant for 2425, that would be a reimbursement grant that we're applying for yet again. So we're anticipating that as a revenue. So the chief will apply. We're assuming that we're going to have a paramedic program up and going. He'll apply to the state. Will be the second, I think, second service in the entire state for community paramedicine. So that, you know, we're, we should be a shoe-in for that. And then under the capital plan, you have 100,000 in the CIP for the community paramedic vehicle plus the equipment, one of which, you know, 32,000 of that expense is just the Zoll 12 lead defibrillator, defibrillator that's needed to make these calls. And we have an already in-hand 100,000 main EMS grant from 2324, which we need to expend by September of this year that we flagged as the complete offset for that capital program. So all of that is currently in your budget book as, as you have made the amendments.
So the 136,000, we have that. That's a grant we.
136,000 is expense for the position that you put in your budget book. You can see there's, there's 150,000 of anticipated program revenue, I'm sorry, I keep clicking on this and it shifts, that we anticipate with the passage of the new law. So that position would be able to pay for itself through revenues generated.
So I look at the vehicle. I feel like we have this extra vehicle in the fire department. I don't really want to buy another vehicle, right? Like, does it matter in which direction we, you, I don't want to order another vehicle until we have a person in the position and it's working. Because, I mean, I just, I'm having a hard time with the number of vehicles. We don't seem to get rid of vehicles. You're, you're saying you're, you have to expend that by September. What if we don't have someone by September? We're going to be sitting on another vehicle. I'd almost rather wait for the second grant to purchase the vehicle. I, this is where my mind is going. I don't want vehicles that we're not going to be able to use yet. If we get the paramedic position, if we fill the position, I'm perfectly happy with the vehicle. There's, it seems like the cart before the horse kind of conversation, especially sitting on an extra vehicle.
So this is a, this is, this is a reimbursement grant. So by the time you, this goes into effect in July, you hire a community paramedic position and start expending on their wages. You will not have consumed the 100,000 to apply for. We'll lose a portion of that 100,000. That's why we proposed the timing for the 2324 grant to be expended on the capital program. That we can expend by that period of time. And then we, we will be applying for the 2425, 100,000 to main EMS grant that we will use towards the position as well. That's the timing piece.
I, I get that. I'm just, I feel like we're vehicle-heavy in the fire department right now.
Go ahead, Pete.
So with the fire department, we got four command vehicles? Is that, is that what we're looking at?
Three, we have three.
We have three.
And a truck.
And a truck. Can we slide the truck over to the, to the police department? And then we don't have to worry about a command vehicle, even though it's a truck, but you guys, that's something to, to think about. Because I heard it was just, the fire department truck was just for like deliveries and pickups. And I want to make sure that if they have command vehicles, if they could use that instead, then we can shift a vehicle over and take care of two departments in one shot. And that's my only thought on that. Thank you.
Steve, can we have an answer on that or?
Chief, do you want to talk about the, the elusive truck?
Elusive? It exists.
Yeah, it exists, but.
I believe there was yet another one asked for in the budget that wasn't approved.
So right now, there's, there's three vehicles. The three chiefs have a vehicle and there's two pickups. One of the pickups will be retired this summer. Needs too much repairs. It's our plow truck. So the other pickup that we have for picking up hose and doing the things on the fire scene, bringing equipment back, getting out Saturday night to go to the homes that were, were down. That pickup will be used for that. And then the old, excuse me, the old one that we do have can be farmed out to whatever department you want, but it does need extensive work done to it.
So Chief, I get, I'm getting rumors that this is going to be a hard position to fill. So like, you can see my hesitation in ordering a truck before the position's full, so.
Again, it's a change in perspective. There's people that don't want to do fire, but want to be fired of the fire world. And there's a lot of people that want to do the community paramedicine because it's in-home care at a paramedic level. So I don't know who doesn't want to do it, but there is a lot of demand for it and it's who's starting the programs. That's, that's what it is.
Yeah, but I'm worried that you're going to have this truck sitting around. You're going to have a hard time filling the position. What's your take on that?
The sooner I can get the position out, the sooner I can start asking for monies. It's like the fire station. The sooner we get a vote, the sooner we can start getting federal money to knock down the big numbers. This position's the same thing. I've had a grant since last August of 100,000 that we haven't tapped one dollar out of yet. That we've written a program for, that we've, we've set up all the boundaries for, that all the legwork's gone into it and we haven't filled it yet. So I would really like to spend that money down.
Oh, I, I have no problem with spending the money down. I'm just like, I want to make sure you can get someone in the position.
I 100% agree.
So we have another truck sitting there.
Yep.
And I understand it's a very different truck than what we have down there.
Oh, yeah, it's smaller, but.
I get it. I just, I hate the idea of having another.
Agreed.
Vehicle sitting down there and not having a person to run that vehicle. And it becomes the place, the truck you use to go do random errands.
You need bodies and seats.
Yeah.
Yep.
Anne? What I'm wondering to Deputy Mayor Hurley's point is what it might look like if we were to purchase the defibrillator, which is at 55,000 roughly. I don't have that number in front of me.
32.
I'm working him right now to, to get that price down, but.
But say it's 55,000, because that number works in my analysis. We, if we take that fully burdened position of 136,620 divided by 12 months, and I know we don't live in a perfect 12-month world. But if we then multiply that 11,385 fully burdened cost by four months, which is July to September. It seems to me that we could potentially expend the full 100,000 with a split of that 100,000 between the defibrillator and the position. Which would then allow us to hold on funding, or have us have more flexibility, let's say, and just kind of to Deputy Mayor Hurley's comment on the vehicle. Use then additional funds, that, say that 100,000 for the 2425 year to then upgrade the vehicle at that point.
The position doesn't work without a vehicle. They go hand in hand, the position and a vehicle.
There's the vehicle.
They, they have to be able, it's in home care. It's, it's, they'll be going to our community partners that will be, because we won't even be dispatching them. It's not like they're calling 911. There are referrals from the care centers, York County Action Program. It's referrals from them. They will be based in those spots doing home referrals. There, there is no position without a vehicle.
And that plow truck doesn't work. Steve, on this topic, quick question, or maybe more globally. So, well, I'm going to comment that what was confusing about this item in the budget is the revenue was there and the expense was not. So it was, misleading is not the right word, but it was confusing to have the revenue there and the position not, as we looked at that, those initial numbers. And I did go back and I did see the 150 of additional revenue, but it just, I'm just saying it was confusing. Do we have other projected grant revenue within our budget for 2425 that we've not yet applied for, out of curiosity? Besides this 100,000?
No.
You see how we find it odd that there was a grant that we haven't received that's been budgeted? That's, I think that's where, where we've been uncomfortable.
So, which one?
So Steve.
Second 100,000, the 2425.
Right, so.
It's been in the budget, even though the position hasn't. So it's, it's been a little misleading as, as.
Right, it's a, it's a reimbursement grant, is what the community paramedic reimbursement grant, the 100,000.
What's the surety of that? I mean.
If we have a program up and going, I would do 98%.
That makes me more comfortable.
We, we got in and we didn't have a high score on the grant. This year, we gain an extra 30 points just because we have a program going into next year. There's not a lot of people applying for it. If you're a hospital-based ambulance service, it's harder to get it because you work under the constraints of the hospital. There is no avenue. Really, it's an extension of their services, their outpatient services. Or the patient just goes back in. They call 911 and they just go back to the ERs. The program is being supported by the state to stop those individuals from having to go back in to have drains removed or have wound care done or. And things, home care just can't keep up with. There's not enough home care nurses to, to go around. So this, those one and done type things, that's what this position will be for.
All right, so if I can, if I can address the confusion. So in developing this year's budget, any and all new positions, with the exception, the single exception of the general assistance position. Were pulled out as, and made part of the Part II budget, right? So the community paramedic position, I heard a lot of consensus about putting that in the budget this year. I pulled it as part of the Part II until the council specifically voted to put that back in to be consistent with what had been done for all other aspects of the budget. Again, with a single exception of the GA piece. The revenue piece, the main EMS stabilization grant, that's been kicking around out there. We hadn't accounted for that. We put it, we put it into the revenues. In further work with, with the chief, as far as the capital program, we had the vehicle expense in there. We didn't initially have the offset for the EMS grant to pay for the capital grant because we thought that was going to go towards the labor side of it, but the position wasn't in there. So we then quickly shifted that to be an offset for the capital program, the 100,000. And we had discussed that in work session as well, right? That that was a good use of that funds towards the vehicle and the defibrillator and their other ancillary equipment and such. And then gleaming every bit of revenue that we possibly could, we know that we could apply for, if we have a program up and running. We can apply for the next state EMS grant, 100,000 and put that towards the program. So you can say that that goes to offset the position. We use that and draw that down for reimbursement. But at the same time, if you have a program in place, we feel very assured that the program revenue of the 150,000, the treat and place, that is going to pass. It has been passed by both the House and Senate. It's sitting before the appropriations committee. The funding is in the budget. It's a matter of finishing that part of the process, but we have to have a program up and running. So we did get the revenues in place, but again, I pulled that as a part of the Part II to be consistent and asked the council to put that back in. That's why you see on the amendment sheet, there's 364,000 in there that's at risk if you don't put the program in place. So we've talked about the community paramedic position way back with, with Chief Benati here. We've talked about it, we've talked about it. Couldn't do it because of staffing resources, not until the ramp, you know, finished the ramp up and such under that. Didn't have the revenues, didn't have the grant, didn't have the state laws being passed that, that applied, they finally puts in place revenue stream for the community paramedic program. So we, we've talked about this for quite a period of time. We paused, we paused, we paused. The timing is here and now. And that's why we have it in the budget and are proposing to do that. We know that, I saw a lot of council support about having this community paramedic program. Here's, here's the profit and loss statement on it and I struggle, because I struggle, because I've heard consensus around this all this time. And now I struggle with, here it is, here's the ability to support it. And I can't summarize it any more than that.
I think it's just been the lack of clarity in presenting the information and all, keeping the income in, but taking the expense out. And it's just, that's, that's where our, that's where our angst is at this meeting. That's why we wanted to clarify things.
That's the profit and loss slide here. There's the profit and loss slide here.
I saw that this week.
Because it was ambiguous, it was ambiguous. There was lack of clarity. So I apologize for that. I don't know, been working on a 30 million budget here.
It always comes out of the fire department.
Round the clock. Can't make an error, right? Can't make an error. But I explained that I took the, the expense out and I put the revenue in.
Yeah, but, and I only feel comfortable sitting here, talking to the chief and knowing that there's a 98% chance of that second grant. Because otherwise, it's kind of smoke and mirrors money, that you actually have received the 114,000, which I didn't think had been finalized yet.
That's, the 114 is final. We just haven't got the check. We've already applied for that and that's state, at state speed, so.
This is literally lack of communication that, that gets my gander up. So that's why I ask these questions. And that's why I wanted, I wanted the clarity, because when we, you know, we were back and forth on the position and we're learning that we actually worsen our situation by taking the paramedic out. That raised a lot of questions in our head. And they were like, well, why did he take the, the expense out and keep the income in? It didn't make any sense to us. It was, it felt like a game. I felt like I was playing a game.
But now you, you understand, you're comfortable with it now?
Well, yeah, I understood it when I saw the sheet, but I didn't like, well, why was all this stuff in there?
I didn't, I had to, I use different colors the same way because I'm not used to the reimbursement type grants. It's like a federal grant, same thing. You submit your expenses and they pay. I'm used to, came from having money, excuse me, money in hand. When you get, when you get the check in hand, that's, that's your, that's your grant, not go back and reimburse for it. So this was different. The face value is 100,000, but it's through expense. So if you don't spend that much, you don't, you don't get that much, but you haven't spent that much. So that's the difference.
Just so you know, if you don't find a paramedical person, pick a vehicle that can be transferred to another department.
And not the plow one.
Because that's, don't paint it all red and assume it's always going to be the fire department.
Jonathan?
All right, two questions. One, is that 136 fully burdened for that position? It is. Okay. And if there is a delay in, say, finding someone to fill that position and you guys have a transit van or whatever makes sense. Is that something that the fire department will be able to use instead of rolling one of the big trucks for?
They don't make transit vans anymore, just so you know, because I looked into that.
All right. Well, whatever, whatever.
It'll be an Explorer.
An Explorer?
Something down, and an Explorer.
Okay. Thank you.
So thank you, thank you, Jonathan. As you remember, that's where this whole thing started, right? Because we, we did an analysis back when Chief Benati was here. We were going to have a transport vehicle that would get staffed to the appropriate EMS calls and not roll our tankers. And I get aggravated when I see the ladder truck rolling down, saying, oh, it's a cardiac event. I don't see smoke in the sky. It's a cardiac event. You know, because getting the necessary people there to save lives, right? So that's, that's where it really started. And then from there, it was the analysis on, hey, there's, there's a community paramedic program. We were talking about designing that into our stations. We were talking about designing that into our stations and such under that. Not many communities had brought them forward. We know there's a huge need for it and such. But again, we've been chipping away at this for years now to get to this point, to be able to present this slide that gives you the ability to fund this position. But it did start with a transport vehicle, just as you referenced, so...
Pete had a question.
Yeah, just, the previous slide, you had LD-1515 and LD-1751. Senator Matt Harrington pulled the swing vote, so it's already ought to pass on the floor in both, Senate and the House, for both of these. These, I hate to say a slam dunk, but we have the numbers. I worked hard on this with Matt. I'd be very surprised, after being down this since 2011, that these don't fly, okay? So, at least we can kind of see these through. These are huge for the fire department, all over the state. So, these are going to roll. So, that's my take on that. Thank you.
And 1751, just, you know, was approved and financed last year. It was a carryover bill to hammer out the, whatever gets hammered out and that was where it is. But there was money there for before. I don't see it taking that long to go through. This is, it was done through an emergency act to begin with, so, for financial stability of smaller services.
I think... Hold on, Jonathan?
I had one other question. If we could go back to that next slide.
Which one?
Oh, this one. If we're expecting revenue and we're also applying for a grant, would that be considered double dipping and they wouldn't give us both? Or how is that, do we expect both of those things to come through for revenue?
I'm sorry, so revenue is off what you do. So, if you go out and do so many calls, those are going to be treated at a certain rate. The grants for the funding of the position. So, yeah, we would be able to do that, but the grants for the funding of the position. If you had two people on the road, you would only get the $100,000 for the program, but you'd get $300,000 in revenue. Being very, very modest with that, because this is all new.
I just wanted to make sure we were able to get both of those.
Yeah, it's, the $100,000's for the program. If you had five people, you could still apply for the $100,000 for the program. Your revenues are going to go off productivity or how many people they're seeing.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, and?
I guess I'm curious what my fellow counselors are, how they feel about this. Being that it's contrary to kind of our normal, I think is our normal approach in terms of grant inclusion in our budget, I'm inclined to remove the $100,000 of EMS grant funds. I recognize the impact of that to our net-to-taxation. But to me, those don't feel like funds that we've obtained. We haven't won the grant. We don't know it's a given. I'd like to assume it is, but if we have issues filling the position, it's not, obviously, we don't have the expense either, I realize, but I feel uncomfortable including a grant that we haven't even applied for in our 2425 budget. And again, it seems atypical to our normal approach. Otherwise, I think there's lots of grants. The police department has some they would apply for, that we'd include, that, you know, it feels odd to me to include that $100,000.
And you're not, you're refusing the program. What you're doing is just saying, we don't have that money, so why include it in our...
Correct. I think we're all in support and have been, to Steve's point, of this program. It seems that it can be self-sustaining. We do have the grant for the startup equipment, so I'm 100% for it. But I think that there should be an adjustment to revenue for that $100,000.
And understand she's not refusing the money. If we get the money, fine. We just don't want it in the figures right now. So, it's a little more accurate.
Well, it mostly affects the overall number. It's not going to affect, it's just going to affect our overall number.
I think it's more consistent. I mean, we were talking about increases to other revenue within our planning department and hesitation to include those based on current year numbers. There's hesitation to increase investment revenue. So, like, I feel like to be consistent, we shouldn't include $100,000 that isn't in hand yet. I don't know what our auditors would say about that, but we haven't even applied for it.
Okay.
Well, can I ask the chief, what do you think the probability is of getting that second $100,000 grant?
He said 98%.
As long as we have a program up and going, will reflect higher in the scoring process. I'm very confident. I don't know how many years it'll go, because once there's an avenue for revenue and sustainability to a program, so the earlier we're on board, the better. But I, it's not, you're right, it's not a guaranteed revenue, but it's very good that it'll be there to offset the wage, at least the wages for our one employee that we'd have.
So, if you're using the initial $100,000 towards getting the necessary equipment for the program and the second $100,000 in the first year towards the position, I just see that as slam dunk towards...
When do we apply for it?
It would be July, July, August, start putting in paperwork.
I think we need the, I think we need the position or he won't get it. I think that's...
Nate?
Just a quick question, Chief. So, the $150,000 program revenue, we don't get that revenue unless the program's up and running as well, right? Because that's based off of the actions of that...
Based off usage.
So, if that's in our budget too, then should that be taken out as well, based the same logic there, or...
You do the same thing now with ambulance. You do projected revenues for ambulance calls. They're not guaranteed either.
Yeah, I guess there's a slight distinction there between actually getting that revenue and maybe a 98% chance we get that revenue. But I mean, that's kind of where I'm thinking of this, is that, you know, if we take out the $100,000 that we believe that is, you know, we're highly confident we would get with that program up and running, then should we be taking out the projected revenue, again, because we don't know if that position's up and running as well? So, that's what I'm wrestling with.
Isn't that really an assessment on what's our probability of hiring the position?
I feel very confident, but I couldn't do a probability. More things have surprised me down here. But we've had interest, we've already had people asking, so...
I have more concern, counselor, of hiring back, that it'll be an internal placement for the Community Paramedicine position and now we've got a backfill with a firefighter, medic. Is my larger concern.
So, we said this is the, this would be the second program in the state to have the community...
Fire, fire-based.
Fire-based. Is there, maybe we can figure out how fast the first program was able to hire somebody? I know it's really semantics at that point, but I think if that person was able to be hired with the first program that's fire-based relatively quickly, maybe that's a projection of what we would look at.
Portland has somewhat of a system, but they also have a Winnebago they use and multiple providers that they use and do block-type, move it around and do block programming. So, when you get up into other services, ambulance services that have done it, they've had somebody in mind, started the program, and that person went right into that spot and started doing it. It was twofold. It cut down on kind of the slip, trip, and fall type patient that you see a lot of, or the somebody that calls because they need a return tip to the ER to have something done. Kind of washes over one to not have to do it or run that piece of equipment.
So, I guess going back to our manager's point, is there somebody that has expressed interest within our own department of holding this position?
During negotiations with the union, they brought up people that were interested in our department.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I guess the question, I guess the only question here is whether we want to keep the grant in, if we're confident enough in that revenue source. I know it worsens our situation if we take it out, so...
I feel confident to let it ride. I do. You're not wrong, but I think we should let it ride.
I think we're in agreement to let it ride.
All right.
Okay. So, looking at other things, where do you want to go from here? Bob, I'm not letting, you're not going home yet.
So, I've heard, I mean, I hear through the grapevine as my various counselors are talking, the E01 position, that's never filled. I think that's the one that has come up the most as, is that something that...
So, we need the list of...
We know we've talked them through, Steve, it's just...
I have today's list.
You have today's list.
Hot off the press.
Hot off the press, oh.
With a lot of yellow in it.
I'm so sorry, Stacy.
With a lot of yellow on it.
Maybe I could get my sister to make you some Snickers, maybe?
I get some of those too.
Okay. Let me drag this over here for Ben. The dog didn't eat the homework, but it kind of looks like he peed on it, so... Code officer, that's been vacant since 2015. We have no current applications. Jamie, do you want to talk about what we talked about, was it this week or last week, as far as code? We continuously talk between codes and planning, type, number, what's the blend and such under that? So, Jamie and I have had a dialogue about, is this hiring back another code officer to replace it? Or is there a step to position in between that could have nearly equal the value to the department? So, Jamie?
So, in the interest of trying to find somebody to fill the position, we've been out for applications for a couple of months now. Haven't had any good applications. If you look on MMA, there's something like 16 or 18 current code official positions open in the state. So, we really need help, and I'm trying to get creative in how we find it. So, I was thinking to myself that we have two code officers that do a majority of the inspections currently. The word code officer scares people sometimes. The word enforcement scares people sometimes. So, I was thinking, well, what if I found somebody that does the office side of code enforcement? Don't call him a code enforcement officer, but train him in land use and the stuff that really I need help with, because we have the inspections covered currently. What I don't have covered is all the office-type stuff that is what is dragging me down, making it so I can't perform my other job duties I need to do.
And then you're going to convince them to be a code officer while they're doing that, right?
Correct.
You did that to Alex.
Look how that worked out for her. Now she does everything.
So, I asked Steve, I said, I want to give it a little bit more time to try to find a code officer, but if this doesn't work out, would he be open to the idea of creating another job description that does some of the duties of code officer, but takes away that enforcement side of it, which I think I could potentially find somebody smart enough to do the office side of it that is afraid of doing the enforcement side of it? And then I might have a chance of getting somebody in for this summer, which summer is the busier season. I'm just thinking at this point, if Stacy was to get an application today, we'd interview him in a week or two. They then have to give a two-week to a month notice typically. Then it's about a year's training before I feel comfortable allowing them to really help. So, we're looking at next summer at best. Whereas if I can get somebody in the office, there's instant paperwork that anybody could do and instantly start the training process to help even more. So, again, we all try to think outside the box here. I'm just trying to think outside the box.
Excellent.
I don't see how we don't have, I mean...
So, the summation is really not a savings opportunity, but a reorganization interim step opportunity, given the resources that we have.
Given that we've, we kind of took out the assistant planner position, like, we kind of rejiggered there anyway. We had the planner, the assistant planner, then there was your office. And now it's kind of, you do the planning and you have the one planner. So, we don't have another in that area. So, it kind of makes sense that it wouldn't be bad to have some of that crossover. And maybe you'll get another Alex.
Mayor, may I?
Thank you.
Mayor, may I? Oh, sorry. So, one, I appreciate that line of thinking, and it definitely makes sense to me. I think not dissimilar to the police department. The risk is that we still need an actual code enforcement officer in a year or the next budget cycle. And now we're trying to decide between that kind of administrative crossover person and adding code enforcement. But it makes sense to me that your office would need some administrative assistance. And so, that's more a comment. The question is that could this position be somebody that might be able to help with some of our dangerous building paperwork that typically was being done by our community development position?
So, me and Steve talked about that as well. In the long term, yes. In the short term, dangerous buildings is a fairly complex process. So, if the budget goes through as presented and if the council wants to try to keep some of the momentum, I will bear that work.
Jonathan?
So, would this code enforcement officer position sort of shift to more of like an admin position? And would the A-level change?
Somebody brought up Alex. I'll use Alex as an example. Alex started in the codes office as an admin with no intention of ever moving forward in the codes office. As time progressed, she's like, wow, this is actually interesting. Will you start teaching me this? And in a relatively short amount of time, she went from having zero interest in code enforcement to where she is today. So, really, I am trying to replace Alex in the codes office. Alex is now equally working planning and codes. And I am at a loss for the loss of work that she used to perform. So, yes, my train of thought wasn't really outside the box. I've already done it once, I'm just going to try to do it again.
Right, and that's what I was thinking. It's like, it's almost like a different way of convincing someone into that position, right?
So, we're reorganizing two departments into one. It's what I call growing pains. It's trying to find that right mix of who does what and who to train the right way to... I, me and Steve have talked for years. I want everybody to better do everything, but specialize in something. We're still trying to figure out that right balance of who does what and who specializes in what.
Any other questions? Okay. All right, thank you.
The next is the civil engineer, Public Works. We, that's not in the operation budget, that's in your capital program. If we're able to hire a person to do this inspection work for us, we'd keep that person on board year-round. To date, we haven't been able to do that. We continue to interview and try to fulfill that position. Mechanic helper became vacant.
Hold on a second.
Before we move on from that, and, you know, we, as a council, we deem that a really important position, especially with the work done on the east side and some of the hiccups we ran into. Based on the work in front of us between now and the start of the RACE grant, is it possible that this isn't, is it more necessary for the RACE grant work in the interim? I mean, it's unfilled anyway, but in the interim, we could not fund it through CIP? And then with the plan of funding it when the RACE grant is happening in our community?
So, currently, you're doing $3 million worth of roadwork a year, right, right now? So, right now, it really falls on Matt Hill. It pulls him away from anything and everything else. He has to be onsite to do the inspection. Pete Smith does a lot of that as well. We'd like to, in the years past, we were paying for contracted services. That's very expensive. It's more expensive than we can employ somebody. And it's been almost impossible for the engineering firms to give somebody up, even under contract, for us to contract the service. That's thus, you know, putting it back in-house, so... Any other questions on that one? Mechanic helper, that was vacated on February 29th. Posted and advertised the position. We have no current applicants for that. I really worry about the mechanics department up there. It's very difficult to draw people in there. They want to go to a big four dealership. Or you'll see down here, mechanic two becomes vacant as of April 4th. Moving into another big equipment dealership with his own repair truck, shiny and new, and, yeah, it's tough. So, I know when we're negotiating that contract this year, looking at the mechanics positions yet again is going to be one of the key elements in that contract. Equipment operator one, currently have two vacant positions. That's the position that we have the most movement in. It's, you know, starts as an entry level. We train them up to get, you know, equipment threes and fours. And we have no current applications in there.
So, that, as Deputy Mayor Hurley, he mentioned, is that one that we could consider only trying to fill one position, especially in light of the constant flux? I mean, in effect, have we only had one position filled?
Yeah, we did that a couple of years ago for the wage and classification, because we didn't think we were down so many that we knew we were... because we didn't think we were down so many that we knew we weren't going to be able to get the whole department filled. We were getting pretty close. I hate to take the brakes off in that, it is so hard to get a CDL driver now. A, it's far more difficult to get a CDL license than ever. It's more hours of training, because they changed all of that. The private sector will pay money that we can't afford to pay for a CDL driver. And I've walked two CDL drivers out the door, because federal regulation says they can't use any form of marijuana, they tested positive and they chose the product over the job. So, it's very, very difficult to obtain these positions. So I really hate to take the brakes off from getting that filled. And your next position, the equipment operator three, that became vacant on the 22nd, last Friday. We have an internal applicant for that. If that person is hired and moved up into that mid-level supervisory position, it's going to create another EO1 vacancy there for us.
What's the fully burdened cost of one EO1? Sorry? Thank you.
Firefighter medic, had a position that became vacant on the December 31st due to retirement.
Hold on one moment, Bob had a question.
I just throw that number, that $93,000 out, that's salary and benefits, right? So I just want people to understand, that position doesn't pay $93,000, it's salary and benefits, okay, that's all.
Thank you, Bob.
All right, firefighter medic, became vacant December 31st due to retirement. They're opening up another process on April 1st, and hoping to get some graduates from the Volk Center and/or other individuals that might be working per diem out there now, and such under that. We have some pending retirements in that department, so we're going to start seeing that department not dissimilar from the police department. People able to retire out are going to take that option and retire out. Police, the chief talked to us about that some tonight, currently have two positions that are vacant. Let's see, we've hired many officers during the past few years, retire, rehires, for one-year contracts. One of those is not going to renew. So again, this is well. Now they're talking about taking one of those vacancies and shifting that towards the licensed clinical social worker. This will continue to be difficult to hire. You know, you can't say enough positive about everything that department has done as far as reorganization. It's, yes, there's competitive wage and bagaging there now, but the work environment and the progressiveness of the department is our greatest advertisement for hiring positions. And we hired quite a few blue pins from other agencies, but that seems to be, have dried up for the moment. People that are willing to shift from one agency to another. Who knows, maybe we'll get some more in the future, but I don't dare to take the brakes off in that in any way, shape, and fashion. Dispatcher, I'm sorry?
You might jinx it, just go past that one.
The dispatchers, oh, that's, yeah. So we have one open position, it's been vacant since January 25th. Position was given a conditional offer on the 6th of this month, and it's currently in the background process, so. Feeling good, Stacy? You feeling good about the background?
Yes, I am feeling good. They're in the final stages, so I'm expecting the next week.
We usually know in the pre-application before the big test. And then we had a resignation in Public Works on the 21st, Public Works admin position, that's a very key and essential position to be in there. We currently have six applications, which was fantastic, so.
I'll add.
Yes.
I wanted to come up and just talk real quickly about the equipment operator position, just to clarify a couple of things. That equipment operator one position, there's eight positions that are in the budget right now for equipment operator one. So as you can see in the last storm that we just had, I don't know if you were on Facebook, people weren't happy. And they're not happy, they want, everything they want is done immediately. When you have eight positions, and you have a couple on injury, you have somebody on workers' comp, or income protection, or whatever, now you're down to six. And then you have something else, and you don't have one filled, because we're constantly having that turnover. Just like with police, like Craig was saying earlier, you have people that leave, as soon as they leave, we're filling them. But unfortunately, you have another that leaves, and then another one retires, and you're filling. So it's that constant changeover. So when you're done, you can have four, five equipment operators plowing your towns, your city's streets.
The entire town.
Entire town, that's huge, and that's not a lot. They're exhausted, they're trying to sleep, it's not a lot. So for me to cut even one position as an equipment operator, it's dramatically impacting the whole town, the whole city. It's not just a small impact, it's a huge impact. So, I know you're in a tough position with cuts, I just really would not recommend it, that's not. And I don't feel like any of our positions, I think the positions we need, we're bare bones. Like Maura had stated earlier, a lot of cuts were made years ago, and we're still trying to build back up. And to cut these positions, I just think you're really going to impact the city drastically if you do that. And I don't think the equipment operators are a place to go. We get quite a few applications in, and we are noticing a pickup and increase in the applications. But Public Works is one, even though with the difficulties with the CDL, we're finding that with Public Works, we do get a steady flow of the applications coming in. We are interviewing all the time. And I really will say, take pride in my department in the fact that where it was at and where we're at. Applications come in, the same day an application is received, the first thing we do is immediately respond with a letter, email to them, letting them know we received the application. So immediately, they know. Typically, then we send it to the department heads, letting them review it, deciding whether or not we want to interview. Within a day or two, an interview is set up, typically, at the most a week. If there's a delay in interviews right now, it's typically because the applicant can't make it in for one reason or another. So we are really right on top of every application that comes in trying to fill these positions. And I think that's part of the reason we've had the success we've had, along with the great work that the departments have done, like Steve had said earlier, the departments are the biggest thing. If they're out there promoting their positions in their departments, and I think they're seeing that. And I will say, we do offer a couple incentive bonuses for employees that recommend and somebody gets hired, and they've stayed on, they stay through the probationary period. In Public Works, I've issued two of those recently. So, it's working. Public Works is trying hard, and they are incentivizing, the same with the police department. They're out there working to try to get the employees in, and it is paying off. So, that's what I just wanted to put in, was my two cents.
Thank you.
Wait, 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 Anne? Sorry.
Wait, there's more.
Once you come up there, you get stuck, you know?
Okay.
No, that was really helpful. My question is, how long we've had at least one vacant position in the EO1 spot? Or is that something you need to pull up?
Um, we've had a vacant position for a while. I think if you look back, and I don't have the numbers with me, but I think if we look back, at one point, we were down like four or five positions. So we've been steadily gaining, it's just, and I think we've gone to that point, we were down to one. We were down to one position, and then we had someone retire, and we had somebody move, and we kind of, you know, a couple steps forward, and unfortunately, more steps back. So it's been close, this is probably, you know, I would say in the past couple of months, we've been the closest to ever, in years, of being fully staffed.
So for next week, I would just ask if we could to actually get a
Okay.
date on the last time we were
We were fully staffed. If I had to guess and say fully staffed, I would say it's been years.
More than one year?
Yeah. But, I would also say, like, again, this is the close, I'll go back and pull and see what I can find out. But this is the close, we've been very close to filling it. In the last, I would say, couple of months, we've been very close to being fully staffed. So we finally see that light at the end of the tunnel. It would hate to be, we've had them vacant, and now when we're finally getting to the point to fill them, that we can't get out.
They should maybe chat with Bill at Dispatch about the snacks.
Yes, yeah, Dispatch has it down pat for snacks, that's for sure.
My sister's already, like, telling me they're going to charge me for the Snickers, I just promised you. Because they make them, I don't. Just saying. Steve, did you have a comment?
Yeah, so when you think about Public Works, don't think about just the EO1, as far as being the deficiency for plow response and stuff. Except with Matt and Pete, Monday. I'll try to remember to put it in the manager's report. So Pete Smith gave me the weekend version of the cascading, of, you know, who he started with, people out sick, somebody had to go off duty because of a family occurrence and stuff like that, and how they shifted everybody around. But I bring that up also because, you know, the EO1 is not just the only person plowing. The mechanics, if they're not fixing, they're out plowing. The people at the transfer station, we shut the transfer station down, they go out and occupy a plow, you know, a piece of equipment in the plow road, and such under that. So, it's not just the absence of one EO1, it's any of these positions that are either in the mechanics, the highway, or the transfer station, they're all out on the road when the
And I love the emails I get, people complaining that the transfer station isn't opened on Saturday morning in the middle of a blizzard. And saying, "Well, we grow up in Maine, of course we're used to snowstorms." But I'm like, what do you think that person's doing? They're in a truck, plowing.
It's also very hard to judge in equipment operator position, because we have an EO1, but we have an EO3, we have an EO4, we have an EO5. So there's that constant progression of people being promoted. So, if we didn't promote and have all, you know, into these other positions, we would have been filled. We would have been filled many times over. But it's because that promotion happens. So it's not even the vacancy of an EO1 position. If we have a vacancy of an EO, like, an EO3 or an EO4 position, you automatically know when you're losing an EO1, because we do promote from within, which is awesome. It's great, and we should be very proud of that. But the fact of the matter is, unfortunately, it leaves that EO1 always seems like vacant, even though you would have normally have fulfilled it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Jonathan?
So, are there more than one EO1 position open right now?
Currently, there's two.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the equipment operator three, that's probably going to be filled with EO2, is that going to create a third EO1 position?
Yes.
Likely.
There is a very good chance. We do have one internal applicant that is in EO1 right now, that we have, we're in the process of scheduling an interview for. So there is a good possibility that that could happen.
Okay, and then, do you, what kind of confidence do you have that you'll fill all three of those positions for this next budget cycle?
I actually, with the amount of, you know, stuff that's part of the thing is, we, as a city, are, have a training program that we've put into place. So, we are in the process of training people to get, you know, to get their CDLs. So because of that, we're actually seeing a higher intake of applicants. They come in, they start at a lower rate, they start at a laborer rate, and once they obtain their CDL, then they get their equipment operator one rate, that's part of their contract. So we have seen an uptake, like I said, in the applications, because now people have realized they can come here, and they can not only have a great opportunity for a good career and job, but they can get that training that is very expensive elsewhere. So I have high hope, and to answer your question, I think there is a very huge possibility we could fill them all in the next year.
If she can fill Dispatch, she should be able to fill
Yeah, exactly.
Well, that's part of the right size in the fleet as well. You know, we have some smaller equipment that we can put non-CDL drivers into to start. That we can find value for that, you know, sidewalk equipment, the 550s and such under that, that we can progress them up, because we can't get enough CDL drivers to start.
Okay, any other questions? Not on this one. All right, keep going. Quickly question on the civil engineer, so we can talk about next year, and whether we have the likelihood of filling it. But, so, the money for the civil engineer will lapse to CIP?
It just stays in the CIP, yes.
Have you considered taking that resource, since you're not going to have filled it in this particular budget year, and potentially doing the little things that we're kind of cutting out of the budget right now, like their fingerprinting thing, and I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there, because it can't leave CIP. It has to stay in the fund, so, I'm just going to say that as an option.
So when you look at Matt Hill's five-year progression on the CIP program, it's a balance sheet. So he adjusts that constantly for every project that he does, you know, you have an anticipated budget for that. It may slightly overrun, or it may underrun, and then all of that stays in the balance sheet, and he uses that to re-shift. So, if Matt had his way, he'd give me a new program every day, sort of like the fleet management, you're familiar with that, right? It changes by the minute, so to speak. So, I asked Matt to just pause, because as you've been discussing, you know, the $500,000 versus the $250,000 versus no ramp, and he's, you know, shuffling the cards, Matt, stop shuffling the cards, just pause. It'd be another couple of weeks, you'll know, you know, where the funding level is going to be at. Then you can lock in and say, it's these three streets that will get moved down, and such under that, so.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about, as we discuss, you know, savings, the things that we can't fill, and you know, there's some things that we've, we're pushing off that we, you can tell we don't want to push off. And, you know, he's saying that he might be able to get $18,000 towards it, and you know, maybe it won't be that much. So, you know, during the year, I would like, you know, as these numbers come in to kind of settle out, it'd be nice to have consideration for some of the things we've had to cut that we really have tried not to cut.
Well, I think some of your opportunity in that regard, as far as Public Works is concerned, is, you know, I don't want to say this, you know...
Think of the police department, that's a little He gets a lot of money.
Decent year right up until the last storm, as far as, you know, salt utilization and stuff like that, sheds relatively full. Plenty of funds there to fill the shed and put it to bed, you know, in a good state for the turn of the year. They've got some salary laps in there as well, that, hey, if we don't have to bleed that on general assistance like we did last year, we can get out and get some of these side streets that we wouldn't be able to otherwise, which we had been doing the years prior to. But we just don't know that final outcome yet, so.
I'm just kind of implying he can share a little bit of the savings. For those little things. Okay. So as civil engineer.
And what's the fully burdened cost of that position? Sorry, Ronnie, do you have that handy? Like, it's a big one. Okay, okay, for next week. And so, I just want to make sure I'm understanding, because I hadn't thought of this, Maura. What you're saying is that we have unspent, in effect, salary and benefits for that position, but it's in our CIP, so it's
For that one, in particular.
For that particular position, because of the way we structured it.
And it has to stay in CIP.
It has to stay in CIP. And what I think I am understanding Steve to say is that we're eating that up because of our management of the balance sheet of that CIP, we've kind of eaten it up, Steve. Am I, so there's no real, like, $150,000 sitting out there?
Matt has another place to
We've used it.
He has another place to spend it, if he doesn't spend it on that position, is what he's saying.
Okay, that was a great question.
Every time you ask Matt, "Well, can you really spend all that money in a year?", oh, yeah. I can remember when that was an issue, because we were trying to be everything, we were trying to do all the reconstruction, and now we're putting that out to contract, you know, engineering put it out to contract.
And I guess I look at it, and he gets a considerable chunk of the CIP as it is, and, you know, if there's something important in another department, I know his stuff is important, but if there's something important in another department, and it was a position that was not filled, as opposed to a project that wasn't, didn't cost as much as it should have, it seems like money that could be spread a little further, maybe, into other departments, in the CIP.
$86,803, Ronnie? $86,803?
Engineer.
The engineering position? Yeah, so that's the 86, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm just thinking, like, you get the fingerprint thing, he still has over $100,000. Jonathan?
Yeah, I think I'm seeing some consensus around maybe pulling that position for this cycle.
I'm hesitating. We're talking about the unused appropriations from the current budget year.
Okay.
More than, I was curious about pulling it, but I'm hearing Steve saying it could cost us more, in essence, if we were to pull it with current projects.
Yeah, so when we were last contracting out, we were expending more than that to oversee construction projects. So we found it far better to employ the person for the full year, because we have never gotten to that point. So Matt Proventure, he is phenomenal, but he is nearly entirely consumed with the permitting volume that we have here. He does a very good job of that, but he's nearly fully consumed with just that. So we've, for all these years, we've, you know, we've had, you know, Matt Hill as a road engineer, and then an assistant city engineer that has never done anything for us but permitting. And I don't say that negatively, it's just, you can't put him out on other aspects and inspections or anything else, because they're consumed with that.
And having been through the West Side Village project, I think this is, this could save us money. I mean, I know one woman who had her basement flood twice in the middle of that entire project because of the, just the way in which they, in my opinion, kind of staged that whole project to begin with. It was just, it was kind of a cluster.
That company didn't send us their A-team.
No, no, not at all. They were very nice, but no. They were not the A-team, for sure. And so it would have been helpful to have someone on site who could have kept an eye on red flags.
Any other, I guess? So what's next?
We do have next week too. I mean, just float that.
I figured eight o'clock would stop.
Okay, thank you.
Anne, did you think we were going to stop at six?
You know, Councilor Transmonting's right. I actually said, this is so great, I'm going to be home at six in time for dinner tonight. Every time I say that, it kills me.
That's where I knew we were going to be late.
It's my fault.
Saying she's like old in some of these departments and she's going to have a vacancy tomorrow.
And my wife asked, what time's the meeting start? Four. Well, what time you think it'd be over?
So Steve, what else can we look at?
Well, I mean, you've hit everything on the sheet here. Anything else that you hit on the pre-existing sheet is going to cost you more money. So I have no other savings opportunities on this particular sheet here this evening, so. And I'm kind of at a loss of where else Ronnie and I would go with this, so.
Anyone in the council have, Anne?
Any thoughts on the SRE building? It's not big potatoes, but that $24,600 we have in, set as, I think it's in the CIP for the airport for the SRE building repairs because we have that issue where the rubber's meeting the, I don't even know, metal or whatever that is.
Yeah, some gutter thing.
Is that the gutters?
Yes. And I'm just wondering, I mean, the airport, we had that amazing presentation. There's so much going on there. Are we going to have some additional real revenue?
Are you talking about in the recent municipal monthly report?
Likely the opportunity to just Google back, glean down through the TIF yet again to make sure that there's sufficient current income and reserve there to take that out this year and be able to meet that service going forward, so.
And then, this is
Allison's not here yet.
No, she left.
Every time I touch that spreadsheet, oh my lord, yeah.
The other thing I wondered about, and I just, it's a baby number, this $3,000. I mean, I really, I've combed through this so many, like you, combed through this so many times. We have $3,000 set aside for the tax bill insert. And again, it feels silly even bringing this up because it's so small, but the growth council, my understanding, is sitting on roughly $75,000 of marketing funds. So it just crossed my mind, one, are there areas within the city budget related to marketing that those funds could be put to use in partnership with the growth council, just generally speaking? But two, in particular, can we at least pull this $3,000 off of our budget and partner with the growth council to do like a dual mailing where, really, from the growth council about what they've been doing on one side and about the tax hit on the other side? Again, it's like a, it's a minuscule amount, but, and then the question of, are there other potential marketing expenses? And at one point, I wondered about Jordan, but I understand she's covered under another economic development TIF.
Yes, Jordan's position is, and the associated marketing is coming out of the airport TIF, the omnibus there. So that, so I understand the $3,000, the expense, I have to bear that expense somewhere in the budget so that I have the ability to expend it.
It could be, I guess, I don't know how this would work. Could we shift it to the growth council and have it covered by the marketing funds? So the growth council is holding reserves, is my understanding, marketing reserves.
You could pull from those, that pre-existing reserve as an offsetting revenue of $3,000.
Yeah, that's what I'm, again, it's laughable, but that was my thought.
So we're going to be stopping. And it looks like we are to the point that, Steve, you've kind of gone through what you are offering. Like, you don't think there's anything, so I should put it back on the council to look through all the documents?
Well, the amendment sheet that we have here, we've gone through over the last couple of meetings, came from your workshop settings and the dialogue and discussions around was there, which is different than years past. You know, Ronnie and I would make unilateral decisions, cut slash, move around and stuff like that, and then present. So this is reflective of what the council had put on the table for us, so.
So you're saying you have more cuts and slash between you and Ronnie?
I don't. I don't. I don't.
Any suggestions?
I'm just, I'm kind of banking. GA, is the GA money not enough? If I get the GA money? Where does it bring it?
Well, you actually put that in already.
That's, no, I haven't yet.
But the 70%.
That was one of my last
You didn't put the GA?
I just frustrations was, you know, in putting the last derivation of that cut sheet, I had to go put $350,000 of expense back in there and ask you to authorize it because of what we're seeing for utilization.
That's, that would give us a drop if we got that at 190.
Yeah, I can put that, it takes me seconds to put that in. So right now you're at a dollar six or 6.97%. If I come over here to the amendment sheet.
Can we go back to that a second? Anne, you wanted to see the figure without the new evaluations.
Which we did, we saw, we did. So I appreciate Steve adding that kind of at the end of the conversation.
So you're okay with that?
Yeah, so I understand you wanted to see that as a complete offset.
Yeah. But now I want to, I would like to see if we were to get that 190, what it does.
Okay, so if I go up here and put that additional $190,000 of revenue in there for GA.
Is that a minus?
Yep. Got that magic, 4.35. They get you down to 98 cents or 6.47.
I don't think it carried to your net to taxation column, Steve. Does that matter?
Huh?
It didn't carry to your net to taxation column. Does that matter on that worksheet? Does it, are you linking?
Carried here.
Okay.
Carry there, so it's 6.47 and 99 cents. Because in reality, those are, those are costs that are completely outside of our control. So if we can get reimbursed for some of those costs.
There we go. I have to have the second column to get it carried to the bottom of the sheet.
Thank you.
There you go.
Okay.
Makes you over to 7.9% overall for the city, 1.4 million dollar increase. And again, that gets us down to 98 cents or 6.47% overall in that taxation.
Okay.
Do you want me to put the $27,600 of other changes that we talked about?
Yeah, that's big money, Steve.
There's not a lot of room. It helps to see the GA.
And sorry, I missed it, Steve. What was our net increase to taxation on the municipal side? Are we at seven and a half roughly?
7.9.
7.9.
Which is much closer to the
You feel a little better about that, that it's closer to the school?
I still think we should find $100,000.
Yep.
For us. But I don't know where, so I'll keep
I'll plead my case one last time, that we're in this scenario because we pulled from reserves. So for the year, we had a $15,000 increase. You tap, 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 tap. We went below, you know, by a percent. The next year, we're at 2% increase, right? You see what I'm saying? If it had been slow and steady, it's that. But when you, when you pull on your reserves and you could create the fiscal cliffs, you've got to make it up someplace. Now it's caught up with us and you're going to make it up, right? So I've beat that horse to death, so.
It can pull the fire truck, F-150. Your horse can pull my because I'd beat that one to death.
Okay, we're getting a little slap happy up here, so I'm going